Just so he can email it to me quickly.
Hey, is everybody ready? Alright, good evening, everyone. Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this. Sorry. I know, it always scares me. Good evening and welcome, everyone, to our council meeting tonight. I want to excuse Councilwoman Tidwell, she is not able to be with us tonight, but we're happy that you're all here. It's my privilege to give the opening remarks tonight. And as I thought about some things that I could share, I, I just was, was so moved thinking about our policemen and the opportunity that we have to have Law Enforcement Week. And I just want to honor all of our first responders, the policemen who protect, all those in our community, who protect us and who are there when we're having a really bad day. And so, thank you to all of you, I appreciate that. I'll conclude my remarks with a prayer. Our dear Father in Heaven, we are so grateful this night for the many blessings that we have. We're so grateful to live in this beautiful valley and we're grateful for the free country that we get to call home and for all of the blessings that that brings to us. We're grateful for those among us who care for us and protect us and ask you to please watch over them and protect them, especially those in our armed services who are away from their families. Please help us to be aware of our friends and neighbors who are in need and help us to be able to do the things that will help make our community a better and a safer place. Please be with us tonight as a council, help us to use good, good judgment and wisdom in all that we decide so that we can help to make our community better. And we pray for these things this night in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I'd like to now turn the time over to the Sheriff's Department Honor Guard for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd all rise, please.
Ready, face. Post, colors. Present, arms. Would the audience join me in singing the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms.
Thank you, you can all be seated now. Okay. The first order of business is we need to approve the agenda for tonight.
I move to approve, to suspend the agenda and amend the agenda to include number, item 6A to be moved as number, right, following number three.
Okay. It's been moved in second, and those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so then we need to approve the minutes. Does anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. Hey Sheriff, we will turn the time over to you now.
For proclamation.
For the proclamation. Actually, we'll do a proclamation first and then we'll turn the time over to the sheriff.
Okay, thank you. Proclamation. Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th, 2025 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 11th through 17th, 2025 as National Law Enforcement Week. And whereas, the members of the Cache County Sheriff's Office play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Cache County. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the Cache County Sheriff's Office unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, in recognition of all law enforcement officers and in particular, the men and women in the Cache County Sheriff's Office, be it resolved that the Cache County Council and the Cache County Executive, County of Cache, State of Utah hereby proclaim the week of May 11th through May 17th, 2025 as Law Enforcement Week. And call upon all citizens of Cache County and all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe this week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And Thursday, May 15th, 2025 as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And further call upon all citizens of Cache County to honor those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness thereof, as Chair, as Vice Chair of the Cache County Council and County Executive, we have herein to set our hand this 13th day of May, 2025. Thank you.
Sheriff Jensen, do you want to make your?
Honor Guard. Ready, face. Forward, march.
And thank you also to the bagpipe that was playing outside, that was really wonderful.
Well, thank you, they do a fantastic job and we appreciate the council for giving us a few minutes at your council meetings once a year to recognize a few tonight, we're going to recognize you, received some awards last night in front of their chair with our annual banquet. We'll recognize those tonight, but there's thousands of great things that our, our men and women in the Sheriff's Office and all of law enforcement do every day that go unnoticed. So tonight, we're just gonna, I'm just gonna have the recipients of the awards just stand, we're not gonna come up and do the whole thing, but I just wanted you guys to be aware of the great things that happened in our county. Deputy Hayden Humphries, the lifesaving award. I'll read by these. The lifesaving ribbon is presented to an employee who directly involved in the saving the life of another. On December 6th, 2024, Deputy Hayden Humphries responded to a report of an individual who had fallen through the ice. He was the first on scene and quickly spotted the person struggling to stay afloat. Recognizing the urgency, Deputy Humphries jumped into the freezing water and reached the victim just before they went under. Eventually, with help of EMS personnel in cold weather suits, they successfully brought the individual back to shore where he was transported to an ambulance and later made a full recovery. Deputy Humphries' heroic decision to risk his own life and safety is commendable and we present him with the lifesaving award for his exceptional courage and dedication to our community. Thank you.
Deputy Humph, Deputy Humphries and Deputy Austin Clark. It's a unit citation for the Patrol Division. We're proud to present the unit citation to Deputies Austin Clark and Deputies Hayden Humphrey of the proactive unit for their exceptional service over the past 10 months. The proactive unit has shown an unwavering commitment to the public safety through impressive achievements to include: 278 citations, 177 misdemeanor arrests, 64 felony arrests, 55 vehicle impound, and over 50 assists to local agencies and other divisions. These strategic enforcement efforts have led to a 40% increase in DUI enforcement, significantly improved roadway safety. They have also effectively impacted personal injury accidents, thefts, vehicle burglaries, and drug-related crimes. Through their diligence and their professionalism, Deputy Clark, Deputy Humphries have set a high standard of excellence for safety and enforcement in Cache County and with great pride, we present them with the unit citation award. Sergeant Tyson Nelson, then Agent Tyson Nelson. This is an Outstanding Achievement Award for the Criminal Division. The Outstanding Achievement Award is presented to a deputy or staff member that excels in the performance of their duty above and beyond that which is required during their daily course of work. Detective Ty Nelson, who was assigned to the Cache Rich Drug Task Force, used his many connections with other law enforcement agencies to dismantle an organized crime network and brought its leader to justice across multiple states and federal jurisdictions. Throughout the investigation, Detective Nelson partnered with various state and federal agencies to execute joint search warrants which included surveillance, searching the suspect's home and vehicles. Drugs, cash, and firearms were seized. He effectively shut down a criminal operation covering several states and funded by millions of dollars. And with great pride, we present the Outstanding Achievement Award of the Criminal Division to Detective Ty Nelson. Criminal Division Outstanding Achievement Award to Detective Doug Thorson. On September 28th, 2024, Detective Thorson was notified of a deceased individual found in Logan Canyon. Upon arriving on scene, he quickly realized the case was suspicious and more complex than a natural death. Detective Thorson communicated this to Incident Command and assumed the role of lead detective on this case. Detective Thorson, taking the role of lead investigator, excelled, excelled at organizing resources, managing case information, overseeing warrant services, and using the staff that he had at hand. He ensured the evidence was properly collected, documented, witnessed and suspects interview were completed, and consistently followed through and participated in every court hearing. His dedicated leadership and efforts led to a guilty plea of the offender and hopefully the closure to the victim's family and friends. And it's with great pleasure we award Detective Doug Thorson the Outstanding Achievement Award for the Criminal Division. This is for the Jail Division. Deputy Weeks is not available, she's at training this week. So Lieutenant Hatch is here in her place. Deputy Weeks is being honored for her significant contributions as a Spillman super user integrating the movement module and her leadership during the supervise, during her supervised maternity leave. Her strong work ethic and dedication are evident as she consistently is ready to give it all. Whether in critical incidents, mentoring new deputies, or performing her daily duties, her advocacy for change has led to the implementation of several important procedures. Recently, Deputy Weeks served as the officer in charge for 10 weeks, handling every challenge with grace. As a liaison with Spillman, she has addressed program-related issues and successfully implemented new scanning movement module which enhances jail safety and security. Motivated by a genuine desire to improve, she serves as an inspiration to her colleagues. As Sergeant Everson says, quote, "Put your cape on, we need you to save the jail," end of quote. Thank you Deputy Weeks for your unwavering commitment and leadership and we're pleased to honor her with the Outstanding Achievement Award for the Jail Division. Support Services Division Outstanding Achievement Award. Emergency Manager Will Lusk. And I don't mention NIMD one time in this entire letter. Will Lusk started his career at the Sheriff's Office in 2017 as the second full-time emergency manager in Cache County. Since then, he has greatly enhanced his vital role and continues to work tirelessly for the improvements and efficiencies of the Emergency Operations Center. Preparing for potential emergencies can be challenging, but Will's enthusiasm remains strong. Following are the key examples of his commitment to readiness. He updated the countywide emergency response plan and collaborated with our patrol and other divisions to create effective and efficient reporting method for critical infrastructure during the times of emergency. Will has established a clear chain of command within the Sheriff's Office and county leadership, ensuring protocols are in place should he ever become available during a crisis. Each year, he provides training and organizes exercises to boost the preparedness, including the annual statewide shakeout exercise which activates statewide emergency operations centers. This exercise involves volunteers such as ham radio operators, search and rescue, religious organizations, and countywide government officials simulating disaster scenarios. He fosters collaboration with emergency management professionals in our county and neighboring areas, building essential relationships that can be utilized in emergencies. For those reasons, we are proud to award Will Lusk the 2025 Support Services Outstanding Achievement Award. Deputy of the Year Award goes to Deputy Brad Nelson. The Deputy of the Year is awarded to, is award is presented to a deputy or other Sheriff's Office staff member for exceptional or distinguished service during the year. We would like to recognize Deputy Brad Nelson for his outstanding work and dedication. His strong work ethic and positive impact on both the school and the community are greatly appreciated. Deputy Nelson consistently exceeds the expectations of Mountain Crest High School. He takes on extra shifts and actively engages with students and community members to enhance school safety. He has fostered strong relationships with school staff, administrators, students, becoming a trusted resource. He has a unique ability to connect with the challenging student, with challenging students to create interventions which enhances our school safety. He also effectively manages a complex caseload, making him a vital asset to the Sheriff's Office, the Cache County School District and staff, and the students. Deputy Nelson's professionalism and leadership positively impact our community every day. We're fortunate to have him as a role model for our students, other SROs, and Cache County deputies and we are pleased to award the Deputy of the Year to Deputy Brad Nelson.
Just in closing, I want to personally thank all of our staff for the great work that they do every day. Most things go unnoticed. Great works go unnoticed, it's the exceptional things that kind of poke out and kind of hit the papers and make a big splash, but exceptional, powerful things are done every single day. Lives are changed every single day because of the work that they do. There's a whole lot more good in this job than there is bad. We always hear about the bad things in law enforcement, but there is a hundred times more good things that our staff does, your deputies do. And we are proud to be, I'm proud to be associated with them for the last 35 years, 33 years. Don't want to age myself. We got the Chief of Police here today from Logan City. And I want to thank him and his staff and our dispatchers. We have something different in Cache Valley than has anywhere else in the entire state of Utah. We don't fight over streets, we don't fight over who's taking this call, we don't fight over who's 911 call that one might be. Outside of a uniform, we literally could all be the same agency. That's how close we work together. We have joint task force, we have joint SWAT teams. We organize and work with our 911 dispatchers. We have support from our government elected officials, not only with the county but the city, and feel the support overwhelmingly for law enforcement in our valley. And our relationship with our community, I couldn't say it's matched anywhere else in this state. We have our issues like anybody else does, nobody's perfect in this world, but our folks are damn close, pardon the French. And I'm proud to be part of them, I'm proud to work with them, and thank you for your consideration and letting us take part in your council meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you Sheriff, so much. That's perfect, thank you. Alright. I don't know. The report of the County Executive is next, Eric.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we've got a couple of items to take care of quickly. First, we'd like to invite our Fire Chief Rod Hammer up. He's got a special guest that he'd like to introduce to the council. And then after, as they're coming up, I'll just say after that, we've got some appointments to propose to the council for the Government Conduct Committee.
Council members, thanks for giving me a few moments. I just wanted to introduce our new Fire Chief, Brady George. Comes to us from a strong fire career. He started as a volunteer in Roy and served 20 years in Salt Lake City, retiring as a battalion chief, and then has recently worked for Meridian as their training officer. I'll give him a few moments to introduce himself. I just wanted to know that Amy told me that I hadn't submitted my letter of resignation yet, so I took care of that today, so.
Brady ripped it up.
It's become official. Chief George will start on June 2nd and my last day will be on June 30th, so I'll give him a few moments.
Thank you Chief Hammer, thank you council members. It's a great opportunity for me to be here. I'm very excited to serve the citizens of Cache County and all of the communities that are contained within that. I have about 30 years in the fire service with a variety of different roles. Starting as a volunteer, it was one of the greatest opportunities of my life to serve in the community that I lived in at the time. Being able to move from there into the state Capitol to serve the citizens there for 27 and a half years was a wonderful opportunity as well. But I'm looking forward to this the most. This is an opportunity for me to serve a community that I have fallen in love with over the last 15 years and actually move my family from Davis County to the Cache Valley here to build our forever home and to raise our children in this area. To be able to serve the community in this capacity is a wonderful honor for me and I thank you for this opportunity very much, thank you.
Thank you and welcome. We're gonna keep praising Chief Hammer for the next 60 days that we have, or 45 days that we have him, so thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you. I bring before you on behalf of the Cache County County Executive some proposed appointments for the Cache County Government Conduct Committee. This is the committee established by the council back in January through a couple of resolutions. And that, those resolutions called for a certain composition of that committee. It's a five-member committee and what I have, and the resolution's actually called for five members and three alternates. What I have for you tonight is five committee members, two alternates, and we're still working on the third. So that way the committee can be composed and then we can get you the final alternate soon. So for your review tonight, and this should be in your online packets as well, for your presentation, the county elected official appointment is Tenille Johnson. The appointed department head is Julie Hollis-Tarrell. The merit employee is Todd Jenkins, he's in our IT department. The Cache County Council member would be Barbara Tidwell. And then the resolution called specifically for a member from the Cache County Sheriff's Office, who, one who is trained to conduct criminal investigations. And that would be Michael Shawn Barchie. As alternates, right now, it calls specifically for one Cache County Council member and that would be Mark Hurd. And then another alternate member, it calls for an appointed department head and that would be Matt Phillips. And then the alternate member, who we have yet to propose an appointment, would be for another county elected official. I'm sure after tonight, they will be lining up in my office to ask that appointment. So I present those for your consideration tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council have anything to discuss with those names? Or does someone want to make a motion?
Move to approve these, these names that have been presented for the Conduct Committee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and is there any other discussion about that committee? Okay, those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you for getting that, I think that's an important part of our county.
Madam Chair, I think we would expect to bring the next appointment to you at the next council meeting.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Alright. Okay, it's close, we're gonna discuss the 911 fund, but I think we want to wait until Sheriff Jensen comes back. Was he, was he wanting to be a part of that?
He doesn't necessarily need to be. When he comes back, we can, you can direct any questions that you want to towards him, myself, or Chief Simmons.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, well, thank you. It's kind of hard to follow those guys, that was pretty amazing. But I have to echo, is that me? I have to echo the Sheriff's comments because I feel so incredibly blessed to be part of our public safety family in our county. It's amazing and I love working with all of the different agencies. My name's Kristy Walker, I'm the 911 Director and we dispatch for police, fire, and medical for the entire county. We also do non-emergent phone calls as well as animal control for the entire county as well. I brought with me Chief Simmons and again, will be available for any questions afterwards. I just wanted to thank you guys for your time and to allow us here to talk to you guys tonight and just give a little bit of history over the current dispatch agreement that's in place right now. So right now, everybody in the whole entire county is paying a $3 dispatch fee on their utility bill or their garbage bill. And how that came to plat, into place was in 2002, there was an initial $2 dispatch fee that was added on to the utility or the garbage fee and that has not been changed since 2002. That has not been increased. And then additionally, in 2013, we added a dollar on to that fee for our separate radio fund and that has not been changed since 2013. So none of the fees have been increased since the time that they were implemented. And so we're here to kind of discuss that. I just wanted to give a little bit of history about how it came to be initially. A little bit about our dispatch center. If you have not been, this is an open invitation for you to come and to see what we do, to see what it looks like, to check out our technology, to sit with the dispatcher, to listen to what, to the calls that they take, the radio traffic that they listen to, and just overall see our whole operations. It's fascinating. I've been there for 20 years and it still fascinates me. So you're welcome to come in as a personal invitation to me. I'd be happy to bring you in as an entire council or individually to come on in and take a look. We are currently funded for 20 full-time positions and right now, we have 15 full-time employees. Excuse me, and we have three that are in training right now. The three that are in training are not considered full-time coverage, so we don't count them, we still pay them obviously, but we're down five full-time positions. Until they're fully trained, we're still down those five positions because a lot of them don't make it through training and I'll talk a little bit about that later. But one of the reasons why we're down in our positions and we have been for quite some time. some time, is our wages are not competitive, and they haven't been for a really long time either. So for example, Box Elder is offering twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents for a starting wage for a dispatcher. Rich County offers twenty-six dollars for a starting wage for a dispatcher, and Rich County, or I'm sorry, and Franklin County offers twenty-five dollars for a starting wage. Our current starting wage right now is twenty-two dollars and eighty-five cents, and actually back in this past November, it was twenty dollars and eighty-five cents. And we went down one of our positions, we originally had twenty-one full-time positions, and we went down to twenty full-time positions to fund an emergency raise, a two-dollar raise for our dispatchers, to try to retain some of the ones that we had from going over the mountain to Box Elder for seven dollars more an hour. That was successful, but it's just not enough to keep and retain the ones that we have. Also, what we're looking to do is to attract the quality candidates that we're looking for, that are career-minded. We want people to come and stay. Our training is intense, and it's long, and it costs a lot of money, so we want to be able to retain the ones that we bring in. And to do that, to attract the ones that we need, we need to have those career competitive Like I said, the training is really difficult. It takes a very specific person and a very specific personality and mindset, and like I said, our training is very difficult. It's a sixteen-week training, and our attrition rate is very high. We usually only end up keeping one out of three that we actually hire. So we just hired three, we're about two weeks in, and the truth of it is, is that we hope to keep one of them. And I'm keeping my fingers crossed for this batch, because they're all amazing, super smart, but the reality is, it's really difficult, and a lot just don't make it through the entire training. I did want to talk a little bit about the fact that our county is growing. I know that you guys know how quickly and rapidly our county is growing. I did some, I did some statistics for back in 2013, we're currently taking twenty thousand more calls for service now than we were in 2013, but our staffing is exactly the same. We have not increased our staffing, in fact, we went down one position. So for us to continue and to get that position back, we need to increase our funding, which is what I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about, how we're funded exactly. We're an enterprise fund, and we fund ourselves. We get our revenue from 911 fees, just like the one I'm talking about now. Everyone pays, everyone in the county pays that three-dollar fee, every household pays that three-dollar fee every single month. In addition to that, we, everyone who has a cellphone, on your cellphone bill, there's a 911 fee on there, and if you reside inside of Cache County, that money comes into the dispatch center. We also get paid by agencies that are not tied to a city or a utility. So for example, Utah Highway Patrol, they pay us to dispatch for them, because they're not tied to a city and they're not tied to a utility. And the other agency that pays us is Utah State University. We also have options for grant funding, we always try to apply for those and get the ones that we qualify for. However, those funds can't be used for wages, because they're not, they're not a permanent thing. So our proposal is this. Our proposal is a ten percent increase on the three-dollar fee for one year, starting July 1st of 2025, for a thirty cent increase on the three dollars for that one year, and then for the four years following, we're asking for a three percent increase per year of approximately ten cents. So at the end of a five-year period, it would end up being seventy-one cent increase per month per household for the entire county at the end of that five-year period. So our primary intention for these funds is for wages and for increased staffing. We're wanting to increase back up to that twenty-first position, as well as, we have some pretty hefty goals. We're growing, and so we want our dispatch center to grow and our services to grow for our first responders and for the, for our citizens of this county, and be able to staff it and be prepared in every single way. So we do have some pretty significant goals to achieve over the next little while, and we're going to need to increase that staffing to do it. So from there, I will open it up to any questions that you have for myself, for the sheriff who's here, and for Chief Simmons, who's also here, I'm sure that he would love to answer some questions, as he blinks at me. Anyway, that's it, go ahead now.
This is in regard to enterprise funds, if following proper procedure can be transferred into the general fund. These funds have never been transferred into the general fund, they've always been restricted. You mentioned that they were restricted.
They are restricted. They go right into, we have a reserve fund that is separate from the general fund, it does not touch Logan City's general fund. So we have a separate reserve that all of our extra money, which we've been down five positions, right? So all of that salary money goes into our reserves at the end of the year.
And the intent for those, is there a healthy balance in those reserves? We've been provided some information from the Finance Department at Logan, there's a healthy balance. Could you explain the intent, what you, what the purpose of that?
One of the things that I've learned over this process, and believe you me, I've learned a lot of things, going to every single city in the county, I've learned a lot. By the way, this is a little celebration, because this is the last time I have to make this presentation after nineteen times. I know he doesn't want to hear me talk about this one more time, but the state auditor has recommended that every facility or every entity have a year's worth of funding, right? So we would be able to supply ourselves for a year if we needed to, we didn't have any other extra income coming in, we would be able to fund the dispatch center and its employees and all of the things that we need to do for all of the costs for one year, which I'm really proud of, and I'm glad to say that we, any emergencies that come up, we are able to fix them without having to go to county councils or city councils and ask for money to do repairs. Nobody wants to wait for 911 to be repaired. Having said that, there's, there is in the future a possibility of us having to move out of the umbrella of the city of Logan, and starting a dispatch center of our own through a special service district. That would be, those funds would be available for that, that would be something we wouldn't have to come to the taxpayers and ask for that extra money. So that would be part of, that would be a building if we needed to do it. I don't know if you've seen the radio tower that's out front, but in talks and discussions that we've had about relocating, just moving that tower alone would be about a million dollars. So that's money that we wouldn't have to ask the taxpayers for. So I think personally, it's a fiscally responsible thing to have those types of funds available for any kind of repairs, radio repairs, and just the overall operations of the dispatch center at our fingertips, ready to just fix whatever needs to be fixed. But looking towards the future, I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know what it looks like for us right now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else have questions?
I have a question.
Please.
Two of them, actually. How long is the training?
Okay.
And do you believe turnover is due to stress, or pay, or a combination of those things? What would you say?
Those are great questions. The training is sixteen weeks generally. Generally, a sixteen-week training, it can go longer, just depending on the person, and sometimes about the eight-week mark, we can say, this person's not going to make it, we just know, we see the red flags and we know. But generally, it's a sixteen-week training. We do it all in-house, so everything that we do is on-the-job training. There's a couple that we send them out to the post department for the state of Utah, we might send them down to Salt Lake for something like that, but everything else we do directly in-house. And then the turnover rate, I think it's a lot of things. The job is hard, it's a really hard job, we're there twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, somebody misses Christmas, somebody misses Thanksgiving dinner, someone's always there. It's really, really a hard life on families, and the burnout is real, and the trauma is real. I've heard things that I'll never be able to forget, and, but those are also the things that fuel you to do the job and to love the job, because you know that you're helping. We do offer a lot of mental health outlets, so we have a lot of that stuff in place for our dispatchers, but it can be really tough, and the schedule is really, really difficult. So there's a whole myriad of reasons why people choose to leave the dispatch center, and some of it's family, and some of it, like we've had a couple recently that have gone part-time, because they just started having babies, and so they wanted to be home with their child more, so then they go part-time, or else they leave completely, you know, different family issues. We just had one that left to go down to St. George, because that's where his family's from, and that's where he grew up, and it was just time for him to move back, he was up here going to school. So there's just a lot of different reasons, but for the most part, the ones that we have there long-term, it's a career, but it does, it weighs on you, so.
Follow-up question.
Yes.
So based on this increase, where would that put your part, starting salary? Does that give us in the competitive range?
It's not going to, we're not going to hit that twenty-seven fifty, we can't, but it'll get us within striking distance, which is what we're looking for. Something enough to keep them from wanting to drive that every day. We're not going to hit twenty-seven fifty, we can't compete with that realistically, but we're hoping for another two-dollar increase, approximately that. Is that correct, what we're, yeah?
Okay.
That's what our hope is, that our starting would be approximately twenty-four eighty-five, which is pretty dang good, I think, for Cache Valley. I mean, I do, I think it's good, so comfortable with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I have a question. If someone comes from another location, do they still go through the sixteen-week training?
We have one right now, so it depends on how much training they have, and the one that we just brought in, she dispatched for a year in the Middle, in the Mideast, I think she was in Kentucky or something, I can't remember for sure. But, so she's not going to take as much training. So hers will be quicker, and she's already passed the two that didn't have any training, so it just kind of depends on how they do, and, but we have certain criteria that they have to hit at certain timeframes, within certain weeks, those are the things that raise our red flags, right? So it just kind of depends on their own, we try not to let them compete against themselves, because everyone's different, but.
Yeah, I was just asking, because if the higher pay allows you to bring someone with experience.
We love that, and we also give them, she's making a little bit higher than those new hires, because we also pay for experience. So we're able to offer that, which is a good thing.
Does anyone else?
I'm sorry.
No, please.
I have another question. So, is there, I feel like this is an unfair question to you, because you're here representing just your division, and we can't speak to Logan City and their budgetary practices in general. But where there is such a large fund balance, if there was some mechanism that were to be triggered, that this were to be run by the state or a district or anything else, would that fund balance, is there a way to do like an MOU or something that say, that fund balance would stay with this, with this division, with this support center, instead of being able to be absorbed by Logan City?
This actually has come up, I'm going to let the chief address this, but it has come up.
Yeah, I'm sorry if it's not fair for you.
It's fine, it's out, it's above my pay grade. I'll let him handle that one.
It's probably above mine, too, but hey, thank you for the question. Yeah, so in fact, North Logan had the same concerns, you know, and we get it, there's some issues with the garbage and all sorts of stuff, well beyond us.
Right.
But we understand your concerns, absolutely. So we did sign, I think it was like a letter of intent or MOU of some sort, just recently in the past week, sent it to Mayor Peterson over at North Logan, to indicate and show that yes, that money goes with dispatch wherever it goes, and remember, if they eventually do, and this is several years down the road, go to a special service district, it's going to take a lot more than just one year's reserve to even get them up and running, it's going to be very, very, very expensive. We're happy to, as a city, Logan City's happy to keep them. We've had them since, what, 1996, I think, back before they were in the jail, remember? I don't know, maybe the old jail, you guys know, it was a long time ago, I was a rookie at the time, but, so we've had it since then, as long as it can pay for itself, Logan City's happy to house it and take care of it. And again, you are welcome to please come on over and look at it, it's very well-run, and they do a great job.
Where is it?
It's in the Logan City Police Department, it occupies the second floor, about twenty-five percent of our entire space is dedicated to that, and so they, we actually talked to DPS here, they came up here, we talked to them about their facilities, their dispatch centers, and they had nothing but braggadocio for our dispatch center, for Brian Low, our IT guy, we really do have a great center. But we don't pay so well, and that's been a problem, you know, since COVID, everything's fluctuated, and here we are. Some people in the other city councils have asked, well, seventy-one cents, is that a lot, is that enough? It is enough, we're not trying to be hogs here, we're simply just trying to offer a little bit more pay, because I'll tell you, and maybe the sheriff will agree with this, well, for us, it's harder to hire, train, and retrain, retain a dispatcher than it is an officer right now. Right now, in Logan City, I'm full, which is great, I don't have any full-time openings, and it hasn't been that way for a while, but the attrition rate and the training that they have to go through, the things that they have to know, I really doubt that many of us on the law enforcement side of it would be able to complete that training, they really, it really is amazing. So please avail yourself of the opportunity to go over and just sit down and listen and hear what they have to go through. Some of the things they have to hear from people that are irate, too, is pretty unsettling. But yes, we would happily give that to you, we did it for North Logan just recently, we can provide that for Cache County Council as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sheriff, Chief Hammer had a comment?
Please.
So one thing to remember, this dispatch center is for everybody. Every call that we go on. Somebody is there to answer. I was on a call when somebody started shooting at our folks, and within a short time, we had over fifty law enforcement people. Jeez, because they do such a good job. When we had the technology changeover last year, Brian Low did such a phenomenal job that the state came to ask how he did it. When I teach fire classes throughout the state and I ask them, how's your dispatch center, how do you communicate? And they go, that sucks, because all they do is talk to law enforcement. These guys, there is no difference to them, whether we're fire, or law enforcement, or any other agency. They do a, they do a just fantastic job. This increase they're asking for is minuscule compared to the benefit that comes to the community, and especially to the first responders.
Thank you, Chief Hammer. Okay, and thank you again for all that you guys do.
Anything else for me?
I don't think so, I think we're.
Thank you.
It's not something we vote on, right? This is just information.
I don't want to know this process, I don't want to know anything until we know exactly what we're going to be doing.
So did you present resolution at the other municipalities?
Did they vote on it?
Yeah, we sent everything over, it just depends on, every city's been different, some of them have voted that same night, some haven't, and some, you know, we've had to go back and do an action item or something like that, but it just depends, everyone's been different.
Okay, we're not ready to vote?
No.
Okay.
I'm going to go two weeks myself.
Okay, in two weeks, we will be ready to do that at our next meeting.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is the Drainage District Board of Trustees, I guess we have some of our applicants that are here, and so I would, I'll just read your names and ask you, we'll start with District Three, and ask each of the applicants to come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself, and why, what your experience is, and why you would like to be on the Drainage District. So we'll start with District Three, we've got Burke Pitcher. If he's here, are you here, Burke? Okay, then we also have Cleve Gibbons, is Cleve here? Okay. All right, District Four, do we have Robert Barlow? Please come and address us.
My name's Robert Barlow, and I guess I'm applying for reappointment to the Lewiston Drain District Number Four. They said, tell your qualifications, I guess qualifications is that I've served for about eight years on the board already, and am willing to continue, but I think the biggest qualification is that I'd like to see the spring water in Lewiston go to the Cub River rather than to my home, and so that homes are not flooded, that kind of thing, so I'm willing to continue that process.
Okay.
Any questions?
Anyone have questions?
Thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Adam Johnson, is Adam here? Okay. All right, District Five, we have John Dent. And just for some of us, would you explain what a Drainage District appointee does a little bit? Is that fair? I'm sorry.
Not really.
Okay, sorry. Just tell us about yourself. Okay.
No, he can talk on this one.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. So in the Drainage District, a district is different than, like, we have four of them in Lewiston, and each-
And each one of them, they used to follow, like, the different ditches. So there was the main canal, and then it branched off into four different areas. Those ditches have become pipelines over time, but those districts are still there, which leads to a very big question of why do we have four in one place? The water kinda goes the same place. It kinda drains into four different areas to get into the river, basically. But the, the original outline of that was basically along the lines of, like, the East Branch, the Higher Canal, uh, the West Cache, and, or the West, whatever. So it isn't there. So my name is John Dent, and, uh, actually, I need to know what district?
District Five.
This is District Five?
Yes.
Is this, am I in District Five?
Okay. That's what my paper says.
Well, it is, it's just where I live, and where I have ground, and where I, uh, I, I have ground in all four districts.
Okay.
So, but, uh, do you have any questions for me? You have to have one, Dave.
Ask you a question.
Yes, I do. Actually, we need more for the District Five. I think there is two open positions, right?
Okay.
You're only the one that we have so far?
Well, we would've thrown right in two, but.
We're gonna have to do some recruiting.
So.
We gotta get another one to replace you.
Yeah. We're actually trying to get him to move into a different district, so. It's across the street, I know. Okay, do you, any other questions?
Thank you so much. Okay, District Six, are there two openings in District Six?
There are three openings in District Six.
We have five applicants?
We have five applicants.
Okay, let's start with the first one, Blake Goodwin, is Blake here?
My name's Blake Goodwin, and I'm from Lewiston, lived there all my life. I'm just putting an application in for this, and so I'll be new at it. I know there's several problems in Lewiston that need to be worked on, especially getting water away from some of our homes and some of our farms. And I just want to be able to help my neighbors, and fellow citizens, and, uh, work with the other board members, and just get things done. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Laurel Goodwin.
Hi, I'm Laurel Goodwin, I'm Blake's wife. I don't, I'm a housewife, I don't know, I'm not political. I have my opinions, but I don't know anything about anything. I can learn, and I'm willing to learn. I, I'd like to serve my fellow community members, and I see that there, as far as I'm concerned, is some real problems in the drainage, drainage districts. We can't, I mean, our lot, we have a 10-acre piece, and it's the swimming pool. And we gotta get that changed somehow. And I just wanna be of service, and if I, if I'm not willing to do that, then I can't complain when it doesn't get done. Thank you.
Okay, Brandon Allen. Is Brandon here?
Yep. I'm Brandon Allen, and I've been on the District, uh, Board for about eight years. I have currently, I am currently a full-time professional farmer. This drain, our particular drain, uh, goes through about two and three-quarters miles of my land. So I've got a big stake in this drain. What are my qualifications? First and foremost, I'm willing to serve on the Board, and, uh, I feel like those funds that we get are very, very sacred, because we are responsible for draining about, say, approximately 2,500 acres, and we do that with about $5,000. And, um, we have had surpluses, small surpluses, but generally, we have spent those mon, those funds to drain the water, to clean the drain. That is the, uh, primary function of having a District Board, or a Board of Trustees, is to see that those funds are used as carefully and as, uh, you know, um, usefully as possible. And, uh, so that's where I stand on this thing, is we can't expand the, the Drainage District's funds any further than their current responsibility without, you know, some sort of a deficit somewhere else. The other thing I would like to mention is, about eight years ago, we went through a lot of reorganization, and studying and finding out a lot of rules about special service districts. And through that reorganization, the county, I believe, the county council, or maybe it was the state auditor, required us to have a survey done of our district. And we spent a considerable fortune. When I say we, I mean the county, the money was spent. It was a considerable fortune, meaning it was nearly equal to our annual budget, to establish our, uh, basically our plat or our district boundaries. And the other thing that we found out is, in order to be on this Board, you have to be in the service district. And so you, you know, applicants need to check that. And those boundaries are set up for a good reason. They must mean something, that we cannot spend money outside the district boundaries, or we shouldn't be. There's nothing in our bylaws that, that I know of that says we're able to do that. And so, anyway, um, I wanna see our district continue to be effective, cleaning the, cleaning the drain, replacing culverts properly. And I wanna make sure that, uh, we work with our city. We have a city, Lewiston has a city council that will work with us on, uh, road crossings, and, um, and they'll even step in to help with drainage when it falls outside of our district boundaries. I've talked to the mayor about this stuff, and he's well-aware of some of the, some of the issues we have in our town, and, uh, has been, has said he's willing to help, but it's gonna take some cooperation from the individuals that are involved in this, in these drainage problems. So, anyway, uh, any other questions, or any questions at all?
Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very much. Dennis Jackson.
I'm Dennis Jackson. I, I would, first of all, just like to express to the county council and staff appreciation for the effort and time involved in, um, going through this appointment of, uh, District Board of Trustees. It's become very obvious that that's essential for the operation of a Drainage District. And when it's, uh, not done, it, uh, does become difficult to take care of the business that needs to be transacted on a current basis. I have been involved with, uh, District Number Six for several years, dating back to the year 2002, is when I first became involved with it. But I would speak, uh, more specifically about recent years, in which we have been involved in a, um, fairly extensive, uh, project of identifying where our boundaries really are. Uh, and I won't go into a lot of detail and, and spend your time explaining why we have done that, other than the fact that it needed to be done. And, uh, in doing that, we, uh, worked in cooperation with District Number Four as well. And the result of that effort was to, um, do an entire re annex, re-annexing of certain areas of both districts, which we learned is an extensive, uh, process, uh, requiring application to the Lieutenant Governor's Office, and a process that's fairly lengthy in terms of, uh, of time, and, and as Brandon mentioned, expense as well. But we, we got that completed, uh, in the fall of 2023. The reason I make a point of this is the fact that, uh, when we finished, the boundaries of both District Four and District Six were clearly identified on plat maps that were submitted, prepared and submitted by Forside Engineering, uh, as a requirement from the Lieutenant Governor's Office to do the, uh, re-annexation. As a result of that, um, we breathed a sigh of relief when it was completed, uh, only to find out that, uh, through the course of the process, one corner of District Number Six, a very small corner involving six parcels of land, was omitted from the, uh, re-annexation and realignment of the boundaries of District Number Six. That is an issue that is in the process of being resolved. And it's important that it be resolved, because, um, the, um, area that was omitted, uh, is an area that needs attention drainage-wise, and deserves attention. I have spent some time in discussion with Jeff Nelson of Forside Engineering about correcting that issue, um, and have learned that there is a way to correct it, but it will require a, um, less extensive, uh, process than the original re-annexation, but it still will require resolution by the District Board of Directors, as well as the Cache County Council. And so there will be some time involved in doing that. But it needs to be done. Now, I bring that up because I had received a phone call, or more than one, regarding persons that were interested in applying for the Board of District Number Six, which happened to be property owners, parcel owners of those four, those six parcels that, that were omitted. And, uh, so we have a, what, a circular, a chicken, an egg problem. They would like to serve, they're not technically, uh, living in the district, but it's because, it's not of their fault. And, uh, so I think that there needs to be some understanding, uh, given for their desire to be involved and to serve, given the fact that the responsibility for them not living in the district, and not therefore being able to serve by technicality, and not also being, um, considered part of the service district, is, uh, something that puts them at a disadvantage. And, uh, so I make that comment because I think it's important in conjunction with what we're doing here this evening.
Thank you.
This is a work of progress, it has been for several years. It continues, and, uh, we have wet years, and we have not-so-wet years, but we find out that drainage is essential every year. And I would like to continue to see the process not only, not only operationally, but administratively, uh, finished, and be involved in helping that to take place.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have one other candidate, W. Perry Early. Mr. Early here? To speak, okay. I believe in the first three districts, those open, there's, there's no more openings besides what there is, so we could vote on those three districts, correct?
And I would so, I would so move that we go ahead and approve.
Actually, um, by technicality, under Title 17B, the county council has to adopt a formal resolution with the names on it to be able to make those appointments, so we probably have to wait until next.
So the next meeting, okay.
More for presentation of names and for your discussion.
Okay, perfect, thank you, Andrew. Okay, so that will, that vote will happen by resolution, and it will happen at our next council meeting on the 27th of May. So thank you all for speaking, we appreciate your service.
By the way, there are seven Drainage Districts in the entire state of Utah. And four of them are in Lewiston. So, which is quite, which is quite interesting.
Thank you for your service, that's awesome.
It, I kinda wish that you guys would just all get together, make one, and be done, so.
Okay. In the interest of time, Taylor, I think we're going to skip seven on our agenda, not skip it, but move it until after our public hearings, because the people that are here for public hearings will move that, um, after we do number eight. So, for those of you that are here for public hearings, um, let me just read an official instruction. We value everyone's input, and want to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. This is a public comment period for all interested parties, so if you are the proponent of the project, you, this is your time to speak. There is no exclusive time allotted just for the applicant, so we don't want that to be any confusing. Please step to the microphone when it's your turn, speak clearly, say your name, and please keep your comments to two minutes. And if you're, if the point you want to make has already been made by previous speakers, please try not to, um, repeat those same, those same comments, if you would, please. So the first one we're gonna talk about is Resolution 2025-15, the Francis Agriculture Protection Area. Angie, are you gonna move us into that one?
Thank you. Angie's Etterquist Interim Director of Development Services. Uh, this is a request to establish a new ag protection area. Uh, it covers three parcels and 64.12 acres. They are located just north of the Logan Cache Airport. Per state law, an ag protection area encourages the continuity, continuity, excuse me, development and viability of ag uses, by not allowing the enactment of local laws or rules that would unreasonably restrict a farm's structure or practice. State code has many requirements for noticing, as well as criteria that have to be met in order to qualify as an ag protection area. Just going through some of the questions that you're aware. Is the area proposed greater than five acres in size? This one is. Is the land currently being used for ag production? Yes. Is the land zoned for ag? Yes, these are in the A10 zone. Is it viable for ag production? Yes. The extent and nature of the existing or proposed farm improvements, um, it's currently used for cattle grazing and crop production. And, uh, it has functioned as an ag use in the past, and will likely, uh, continue to function in that manner into the future. Noticing requirements. Noticing requirements are also pretty stringent for this. We need to have to notify everybody within a thousand feet of the proposed ag area, ag protection area. We have to place notices in five public facilities. We did that with, at North Logan City Hall, Logan City Hall, Smithfield City Hall, the airport and county office buildings. And then it also goes, a notice goes to the Agricultural Advisory Board, who has 45 days to review and provide any comments. They were notified on February 7th. The 45-day period ended March 24th. We did not receive a response from them. We did receive one written public comment after all the noticing. Their main issue was that it was located in an area that's a planned expansion for the airport, and that was their main concern. This did go before Planning Commission for recommendation and was unanimously recommended for approval four to zero during the April Planning Commission meeting. So with that, let me know if you have any questions.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah. Okay.
Of the concern, was it only one parcel, two parcels, three parcels of this from the airport? Do you know?
It wasn't from airport, it was from a citizen. Mr. Clark, it references all three properties, but it doesn't specifically limit or exclude any of them, so.
Okay.
Are all three properties owned by the same landowner?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Angie. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone here from the public that would like to speak about this project, now is your chance.
Hi, I am the applicant and the agent. My parents own two of the parcels, I own one of the parcels.
Can you give us your name?
Seneca Francis.
Okay, thank you.
Full disclosure, I do work for the county and development services. I didn't have any, we haven't seen any plans, right? We don't see airport stuff, that's all pretty much Logan City. We've been involved in the airport for my whole life. My parents still watch the meetings and attend things like that, and they just are noticing changes in attitude, right? Everybody's getting more city, more things, they want more things. It's like, we just want to be left alone. Can we just do farm? Can we just do a cows? So we thought that was the best way to say, hey, we've watched your plans change, you go this way, you go the north, you go the south. So we're just putting it out there that we just want to farm. And yeah, any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to this?
Move to close a public hearing.
Second.
Move to second, we close public hearing. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's go to the next one. Resolution 2025-17, the Powder Mountain Development Agreement for a ski lift.
Yes, Angie's Etterquist again. So this is a request from Powder Mountain to enter into the development agreement to build a ski lift. It is just one ski lift in the northeast area that was recently rezoned by the council. It would allow them two years in order to build this ski lift without having the master plan adopted, as will be the case with the next three items and is in the staff report. Last year, when they came forward for a development agreement before they had submitted a plan, a master plan, excuse me, county staff as well as county attorney's office looked at the options, and there were three options, either to go through the normal development process, do a development agreement, which was allowed because it fell outside the standard regulations of the code, or do a code amendment. So it was pursued last year. There was approval on two different, two new ski lifts going through this process. And the county attorney's office has looked at that process again and believes that this is the correct course of action because even though the RR zone exists, the master plan is actually the development document that we have to have in place in order to review those different projects. So again, this one is for a ski lift. And again, they did provide their version of the development agreement, will need to go the full, if approved, will still need to go through the full review process for contracts, but it does allow them to build it and within two years from the date of the agreement. We've received numerous comments, as I'm sure you have as well. I think there are easily over 120-plus comments. Typically, they range from just questioning the, this development agreement process that we're pursuing in order to approve these incremental developments. Then there's also been concerns about public access, ticket pricing, and just in general, permanent public access to the sites without privatizing some of these lifts, which I believe this particular one is in a private development area of the resort area. So with that, Planning Commission did review it, they recommended approval. My notes say four to one, but I was looking through the minutes just before this, so there is some confusion as whether it was four to one or three to one, and I do apologize for that, but it was recommended for approval of the county council, so.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Angie about that? Okay, do we have anyone here from the public that would like to speak about this project?
Good evening, everyone. I am Brooke Hance, Chief Development and Construction Officer with Powder Mountain, and I request that it be okay and amenable that I give a presentation and I actually talk about all three applications at one time to save time. Is that okay with the council?
I think that's okay. Yeah, we're going to take them one at a time, though, and so it might, actually might be better, Brooke, if you just take them one at a time because I think they're diff, they're all such different.
Applications? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, if you'll, if that's okay with you, I would prefer that.
Absolutely. What if I give the things that are applicable in terms of comments right now, and I don't repeat them in the, and then we, okay, how does that sound? Excellent. Thanks for your consideration of all three tonight. They are development agreements. And if you saw or attended the April 3 meeting that Angie just referenced, some of the material is the same because the applications actually haven't changed since Development Services suggested that we proceed in this manner under their leadership back in January. So these are the same materials that have been in front of the county for a while. So I will cover whether it's in this presentation or the next two that I'm going to give. I will make sure I address the road, fire and EMT services, the public versus private, and code compliance, if you want to go to the next slide. Thank you. So you may all remember about a year ago when we came and we said, we'd please like to proceed under a development agreement process, the legal counsel at that time, which has been, as I understand it, reiterated in a new, in a new letter provided today from your legal counsel, that the process of a development agreement, lowercase d, lowercase a, was an acceptable process under state code. And we did, we are so fortunate to receive that approval from you in the Planning Commission at that time. But as part of that, we said, we will submit a master plan CUP, which addresses the entire property and all of the pieces of the RR zone. So we lickety-split, put that together, took a lot of effort, a lot of consultants, a lot of time on our part, and submitted it on October 2nd, 2024. So that's eight months ago. And so in that time, the master plan processing, I believe, is underway under Cache County Development Services, and we plan on continuing that process and in fact have suggested via a letter to Development Services that here's a strategic way to move forward with planning, meeting dates that include council and the Planning Commission together or separate, lots of different ways, but we've suggested a timeline to complete that. But in fact, that has been done and is available to the council and to the Planning Commission for their review. So on that timeline slide that I think you've seen a few times before, the actual communication about that we would be back if we weren't able to complete the master plan review process with the county to ask again, based on construction seasons and based on what we thought and we knew a year ago, this summer, we would be looking at replacing an existing maintenance facility, a ski lift, and some public trails. So we're going to actually, oh, we'll, so we'll hit the road right now. Just because I did it at the last meeting because I got a hot tip that it was an issue and I want to make sure I reiterate it every time that I have the opportunity, there is no road proposed or planned coming from the Cache County, the south end of the county, anywhere near a project through and over into Weber County. So I think on some maps it's called South Canyon Road, and there are some other private or public roads in that area. None of those are proposed as access. So depending on how you look at it, fortunately, unfortunately, that means from this point in this courthouse, you would follow that yellow dashed line to the south out of the center of Logan. You take the route up over through Sardine Canyon, Pass Manaway, down into the valley, down through Salt Lake Valley, and then you get, there are actually multiple options of coming back up, but none of them include Cache County. They are the North Ogden Divide or the Ogden Canyon Route. And so I just want to make sure, although that's not part of any of the three development agreements, that I continue to reiterate that as something that's not part of our application. So we will start, because Angie started with ski lift, let's go, if you wouldn't mind, we're going to skip ahead. Sorry, thanks, Andrew. Keep going, that's because this is the maintenance, so don't look, this is a preview of what you're going to see in a few minutes. Apologies, I didn't put them in the same order that, okay, ski lift A. So this is the language regarding, that's included in the actual application. And if you go to the next slide, I think it will really speak to. So as part of the submitted master plan, this lift, as you can see, is in the far upper right corner, which is to, to the north and the east of the property that Powder Mountain owns. And this actually, at a previous meeting, I think this particular area, at least where the base terminal is, which would be at the very top of the page, was, you know, what are you doing in that area? And I said, well, we have pretty much nothing except for some skiing. And so, so in this map, you can actually see, it gets close to that upper north far quadrant of the land. And if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, please. So the, the area that's colored in that tan brown color, that was the area, the 1,620 acres that you approved as part of a rezon application that was FR40. So we could have left that in the FR40 zone and actually applied because it's a conditional use. Obviously, your other ski resorts in the county are FR40, and those lift are, lifts are allowed. We could have kept it as part of that and actually back in January, so applied under CUP and, and been here under a different application. However, based on the leadership, back when we started this process over a year ago, and what really makes good planning sense, we took those 1,600 acres and we included them in the master plan. And so rather, and contrary to kind of some of the statements that are said, there's actually another layer of review, even with a development agreement, that's going to happen with the master plan and the processing that has to happen there. Another point that's important to make about the public-private is that this lift happens to be proposed as part of the private skiing experience where people will have passes and memberships to ski on certain lifts in certain areas. But this land was never public. It wasn't, even though all of this land is private, this particular piece, at one time, I looked it up, was part of what was called a Whisper Ridge CUP, and that was a private operation on private land. Prior to that, it appears it was owned by various ranching families and had also no trespassing private land signs on it. So it never has been, at least in the, as far back as I could go for this particular 1,620 acres, a part of an active ski resort public use, which also isn't, you know, public-public, it requires a ticket and liability forms and so forth. So I think that's an important component of this. And lastly, as part of the, the ski lift presentation, one of the questions or comments has been, you know, why is the resort going private? Well, again, this is 1,620 new acres that wasn't part of the traditional, what people have skied in the past as Powder Mountain Resort, you know, the 50-plus years that that resort has been operational. That model, that business model, unfortunately, in today's world, wasn't working anymore. And so Reed Hastings, our owner, has been fond of saying, we were at the nexus of inexpensive and uncrowded. It didn't pay the bills. And so there are other things that we're doing now strategically, whether that's lift ticket pricing or season pass pricing and going private on areas just like this one, including some, though, in Weber County as well, that are different and can help pay for the operation of this entire resort, which is massive in the scale of ski resorts in the country. I'll just see if there's any other notes. Oh, one more, sorry. I did want to highlight, in the master plan application that you have, that entire light blue area is what we've proposed as part of the skiable and recreation terrain. And so you can see, we'd circled in red, I know it's small because again, it's huge acreage, it's 5,200 acres altogether. You can see how that particular lift aligns with all of the acreage, and then that far, far north tip is actually more evident now that doesn't have any land use in it. Okay, if there's no other question on this particular application, I'll save the rest of the presentation until later.
Okay. Does anyone have a question for Brooke about this ski lift? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, anyone else from the public that would like to speak about this project? Please.
I'm here representing Save Powder Mountain. We have over 1,000 signatures.
Your name, please?
Blake Hoffman. We have over 1,000 signatures to keep Powder Mountain public. We appreciate the council's efforts thus far to do what's right and fair. I'm here to express our concerns about the development approvals at Powder Mountain. Brooke did clear up a few items, one of which is that the council will have some say in that master plan, because I believe at the Planning Commission meeting, it was communicated that the development agreement stipulated in the code would not actually go to the county council. So that, that's helpful context, and I hope that's the way this actually moves forward. So it's a, it's about a year ago, I think, that the, that the council approved the Lightning Ridge and Rain Tree lifts. That approval was also outside the established process, which requires a master plan first, with the understanding that those larger issues would be addressed in the master plan. That seemed fine, yet here we are a year later, and we don't have an approved master plan. And I don't believe there was a formal submittal, but maybe, maybe there was, I could be incorrect. And once again, this is an approval outside the established process tonight, and it's not all negative. It does present a rare opportunity and responsibility to ensure the approval delivers a real public benefit. When we are talking about private lifts, this development agreement that we're talking about tonight for the ski lift should also contemplate a real public benefit, which would be permanent public access to the existing public lifts in Cache County. This includes Paradise, Hidden Lake, Lightning Ridge, Sunrise and Timberline. What's before you tonight is kind of part of a troubling trend with, with one-off approvals without a cohesive plan. I mean, the way I view it is you're approving the framing of a house, but we don't know what the foundation looks like or if there even is one. Will the public continue to have access to the lifts that we've long enjoyed? Will there ever be a balanced master plan that reflects both, you know, their development rights that they have and the intent of the zoning? You know, the intent of zoning, if you read the code, it's resort recreation zoning, it's to expand recreational opportunities and boost tourism in northern Utah. And I believe without a master plan, that intent has been undermined and that once approvals are granted, your ability to influence that outcome disappears. And I think that basically Planning Commission, it was stated that, that development agreement stipulated in the code for the master plan would actually not go to council, it would just be kind of rubber stamp by Planning Commission. And I'm, I'm sorry, am I over? I guess there's three items, so I can, I can be back.
Really quickly, really quickly.
So, yeah, I mean, I think that, I just think the development agreement tonight, you know, should include some protections for the public so that additional privatizations don't occur. We have seen this occur in Weber County already, there were two lifts that were open to the public last season, they were privatized this season. You know, it's, it's obviously a different county, but I think, you know, there, there should be a line in the sand that basically says, this is the private area, this is the public area, and we shouldn't, you know, there's nothing wrong with a private ski club operating on private land. That's a perfectly fine thing to do. I, I just think you need to have a line in the sand or, you know, the public, which is, you know, it's, it's the first. you know, it's the first private-public model in the country, right? So with that comes a lot of questions, like, how does that work? How do you kind of manage it such that the private, it doesn't just become a private resort over time? Right? So right now, you know, the public, it's, it could, it could, you know, if it were to go fully private, it's very expensive to run a fully private resort. So the public, in some ways, today, helps subsidize the private portion of the resort. And I worry that over the long term, as the private resort gets more members, sells more homes, it's kind of a gradual moving line and a full takeover of the resort, and then that starts impeding public access.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hoffmeister. Okay, is there anyone else from the public that wanted to speak about this project? We're going to try and keep these to two minutes if we can, so we can get through tonight.
Lee Atwood with Paradise Town. I was just curious, did you guys get a letter from the town council? Okay. So just wanted to reiterate that a little bit, that I think the master plan is really the first step that needs to be done. I know the state code says that you can move forward with development agreements, but, as was mentioned earlier, you may move forward and go, oh yeah, we got out here a little ways, and that's not quite what we wanted, because we didn't have the master plan in place that tells us this is really what we're going to do. So really, it would be advantageous to have the master plan in place, and then really just, we'd call it phased development that they would move into, which would be then we're adding the ski runs, maintenance sheds, walking trails that we're currently looking at right now, that you're looking at, and then any other items that are coming up, so.
And I just want to clarify that Powder Mountain did present a master plan last October, and that because of shortness of staff, we had a change in leadership and different things that have happened, we have been the holdup. The county is going through that plan carefully to make sure that we are protected and that there's nothing, once it's approved, that we would think that we didn't understand. And so that's the status of the master plan, as far as I'm understanding it, so that it's not, it's not because Powder Mountain, they gave us a master plan last October, and we are still in the process of approving that. So that's where the status on the master plan is, and I just want to clarify that for everyone that's here.
Okay. Well, then, we ought to be looking at that as quick as we can before we move forward with anything new, because it seems like that in that process, if you're just kind of piecemealing it out without a master plan, we may end up with something that's not going to be advantageous to the county or county residents that are on the south end of the valley and through that whole process, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else from the public that wanted to speak about this ski lift project?
Madam Chair, could I just have a couple of minutes to clarify the process?
Yes, thank you. Because I don't know if I said it correctly.
I promise it'll be short. I just want to clarify for the council and for all of our visitors, that some of the ideas presented in some of the emails just didn't quite understand, there seems to be a possible misunderstanding with the process. Our county code clearly states that in order for the master plan process to be considered, the first thing that needed to happen was the rezone. And so we talked about that several months ago, so we presented, talked about the rezone. That was after last summer, we did allow, the council allowed, and some of these smaller development agreements came through. Those smaller development agreements are allowed via state code. And so we thought that those were minor enough, and the council did, and so those smaller projects were approved. So in other words, it goes rezone, we did that, then the master plan. And so that's the order that it goes in. However, there's a problem, or there's some difference in the last several years, the state passed state law that took out, let me back up. Our county code says, any rezones have to happen first, then a master plan, then capital D, capital A, development agreement, and it was a big development agreement that used to be allowed by state code. Our current code reflects that process. However, after working with Andrew in the attorney's office very carefully, we understand that that process that is still shown in our county code isn't even allowed by the state anymore. So that is probably part of the, what leads to part of the confusion, is that our current county code still has that process, rezone, then master plan, then a large development agreement that would spell out some of the projects that would happen. That middle part of the big development agreement now isn't allowed by state code. So now, what are we planning on doing? Well, we did the rezone, and we are considering the master plan, but similar to what we did last year with some of the smaller projects, we're just considering some of these three projects that are before council now, which is allowed by state code. Now, Mark had a question for me as things were being discussed. The council is the, was the final say on the rezone. However, the master plan, the final vote on that goes to the Planning Commission. However, after that master plan is approved, Powder Mountain will come to us with some of those smaller agreements. They have to come to us with conditional use permits, they have to approve their projects through the normal process that any other landowner would to expand that use. The importance of the master plan is that that master plan sets forth the grand vision for the projects. So as we get the smaller projects later, if there's something in there that is clearly outside of the scope of that master plan, that's when we can say, hold on a minute, that's not what was in the master plan. So I'm just trying to help give that overview to show that there might be some misunderstanding about, we're not outside of our process. It is true that our code isn't completely in compliance with state code right now, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Dirk, this may not be a fair question to you, and I apologize in advance if it's not. Are these three projects specifically mentioned in the master plan as you reviewed it?
Yeah.
And they're following the exact format that they are presented in the master plan?
I believe so.
As closely as you can tell.
And not only that, but voting on these development agreements, once the council figures out what they want to do and take the votes, that doesn't mean that they're just flat-out ignored and they go do whatever they want. We still, even on these development agreements, would work with them. Angie and I have talked about how we would work with Powder Mountain to make sure that they're implementing them correctly and doing things in, you know, line with our county code and, you know, our, which includes development code.
Right. I just, there's been some inferences, it's kind of putting the cart before the horse, but if these are being, if these are laid out in the same way that they're presented in the master plan, even though you've explained the process, our process is kind of antiquated.
Right.
This isn't necessarily putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so, but I also want to be fair, I'm a budget and policy analyst at heart, and to me, the issue the council needs to decide is whether these sorts, you know, we had a few last year, and now we have a few this year, are they minor enough and are they purely in line with the use of the land? And I think that's what the Planning Commission came to, that they are within the accepted uses. And so that's, I accept the, in part, that argument, that you could want to maybe do the master plan first, but in my mind, it's, these aren't uses, you know, I personally agree with the Planning Commission's findings.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. If we have no more public comments on the Resolution 2025-17, I would take a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to 25-18, the Powder Mountain Maintenance Shop.
Yes, Angie Zetterquist, Development Services. So as, going in the same process as the previous discussed item, this is for a replacement of an existing maintenance shed that is located on the west side of the resort. The existing maintenance shed would stay in place, there are, the new maintenance shed will be located a little further north and west of the existing. And again, it has kind of the same stipulations that it would be, development agreement will last for two years. They have provided some preliminary plans, if you wanted to look at that. It does cross over a property that's currently being acquired by Powder Mountain, but on our GIS and ownership information still shows a different owner, but they have signed an agent letter acknowledging that they are aware of this application and the proposed maintenance facility. So again, that one was presented to Planning Commission in April, that one was on a three-to-one vote in favor of recommending approval to county council.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have questions for Andy? Okay, this is a public hearing on that project. Can you try and keep it to two to three minutes, Brooke?
I'll keep it really brief. So we're going backwards to the maintenance facility, so if you wouldn't mind going to the mapping, so try to give it context again, because it's such a large site. You can see the red dot is where it appears, if you'd go to the next. So the current maintenance facility, so this area, including where the new footprint of the maintenance facility is shown, is all maintenance use. So it's lay-down area, it's parking, you can see kind of some of the snow cats in that particular picture. In the winter, we actually spread out where that current, our proposed building is shown. The reason why we're not placing it on top, which was our original plan of the existing building, is because we'd like to actually use that this summer while we're building the future facility, and then we will take down the existing building, and we'll be able to move back and clean up some of that current lay-down, not really well-utilized area. So I wanted to clarify that, that actually is a, we're not adding a new facility and keeping the old, we're demoing and eliminating and cleaning that site up. Also, the reference to the other parcel, that's true, it hasn't been reflected on the county's website yet, because although we've transacted on the parcel, the elimination of the property lines and that it shows as our property hasn't happened yet, but the, that's been in the works now for four months. So we, it's done, it just needs to be updated with the county's website, and if you go to the next, the, unfortunately, it might be the most attractive building on the project site for a long time. It's a pretty slick-looking maintenance facility. It takes what we've had, which was approved in Cache County back in 1996, and it was basically a glorified pole barn, and it actually does the things it needs to do in terms of ventilation, OSHA standards with distances that we can have fuels and storing things like vehicles to power, and all of those things are addressed in this more modern and up-to-date facility. And if you go to the next slide, you can see, if you are so interested, the, it really truly is very efficient in just basically to support the resort operations. And so those are bays for parking, both on the rubber tire, the roadside, and then the snow side, and then there's just bathrooms, a little bit of locker space, and areas, again, to protect the employees and to keep, you know, people and the materials out of the weather. I think that might be the last, that's it?
Does anyone have a question for Brooke about the maintenance building?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there someone here from the public that would like to speak specifically to this maintenance building project? Do you have something different to say than?
Yeah, I got a little different, just a different thought.
Thanks.
So.
Say your name again, just for the record.
Lee Atwood with Paradise City, Paradise Town. The process that you're going through is basically changing your ordinance, or if you were changing, like if you were doing an Ag-10 zone, you're going through the process of amending your ordinances, saying, okay, we're going to amend it to add a two-acre zone residential. So you'd have all the public hearings, get the input from planning and zoning, and then do the same thing here, then vote on it as you amend your code. It seems like, and again, it would make most sense to not go through that process amending the code, it would make more sense to spend our time working within our code that we currently have, even though the section is invalid that talked about development agreements. And I understand that, and I think most people do understand that, but that still makes sense, because that's a process that you're, we're going through that's really, you're amending the code for this one item, which I doubt we would do in most conditions or most times, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this project?
So yeah, you know, I do think in some ways this is the cart before the horse. I mean, I do wonder how the public is protected in the way that this approval process is working. The development agreements today should indeed meet the intent of the zoning, which is to expand recreational opportunities in northern Utah. The, you know, area that we were discussing, that if you look at old trail maps, that actually was accessible by cat skiing, that the mountain was charging for, and I truly have no issue with that becoming a private area, as long as there are some protections in place for the public to continue to enjoy access to the mountain. And, you know, I do think that the council needs to be involved as part of that master plan process, you know. I'll take your word for it, that, you know, basically, this Utah state law doesn't allow that development agreement that's currently contemplated, capital D, capital A, development agreement, in your code to be allowable today. But I do think, I do think it is necessary to have some type of council approval to make sure that there are some ways for the public to be protected over the long term, and that, you know, the project indeed meets the intent of the zoning. And I will say, you know, the mountain, you know, they've got 2,800 units in Weber County approved already. They plan to build 750 homes for this private ski club. So, I mean, the question to me is like, what actually keeps them in the game to keep coming, to come back and actually get that master plan approved? Like, what if they just walked away tomorrow and said, you know what, if that's going to come with stipulations that say that the public needs to have continued access, we're actually just not going to pursue that path, because we have plenty of units already approved in the adjoining county, which further complicates, you know, the first private-public model in the country, you know, it's further complicated by the fact that we're dealing with two different jurisdictions, and there's not a ton of coordination between those two jurisdictions.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffmeister. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about the maintenance shed project? Okay, someone make a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the third one is Resolution 2025-19, the Trail System and Art Park.
Yes, hello, Angie Zetterquist, Development Services. This development agreement request is to establish a system of trails and art features at the Powder Mountain Resort. It is about, according to the information, a little over nine miles in length, with a range of easy to intermediate levels of difficulty. That nine miles encompasses 16 different parcels. This is something that would be a non-skiing season amenity that would be publicly available for the public to enjoy during non-ski season. I don't believe there would be any fee or ticket requirements to access that. Brooke can provide more detailed information. But again, the development agreements follow the same as the previous two that we've discussed about timelines and going through that additional review that'll still be required with zoning clearances and that. But with that, if you have any questions?
Anyone have questions for Angie?
Maybe just something to get on the record, there were two letters that we received in favor. One, I don't see either individual here, Jamie from the Cache Chamber and.
Mandy Hassan.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't think I saw this.
And we have someone else, I think, here to speak in favor.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Angie. Joni.
Brooke Kons again, Powder Mountain. If you look, we're already there. So the language specific to the request, I think what's interesting about this particular request is, first of all, it's doing some of the things you're hearing, being asked for. It's actually opening up the mountain and building trails on private land for public use. And the question that Angie wanted some clarification, there is no fee or ticket intended for these trails. However, if you notice, if you go to the, let's go a little bit more, one more, there you go, the red squiggly line, and then on the right-hand side, you can see the zoom-in of the terrain that it covers. What we discovered is this area aligns really well with two of our existing lifts. And so potentially, in the future, we could maybe operate something where you hike down and you realize, you know, I think I may rather ride the lift up, and there be that experience included in the trail system.
experience included in the trail system. That would require a ticket, but the, if you wanted to hike back out, it absolutely would not. And so, that's to be determined. We haven't even figured out if the lift system is going to run with it. But I also wanted to mention what is so cool and unique about this that we don't think is done anywhere else, at least that we can find in North America, in ski resorts. And that's is, that this isn't just a trail, this is an interactive or an experience that involves art. And so, there are art installations planned throughout this entire trail system that you'll be able to experience, walk up to, probably touch. There's maybe things that you could ring like a bell, that, one of which we actually currently have out on a different part of the site. And so, it isn't just trails, and it's not just art, it's both, and it is available to the public. And lastly, I wanted to mention, let's go back, let's see if there's anything. The blue area is the general area for the art loop as we lay it out, but that happens to be in the center of essentially kind of current operations of the public resort. And if you remember back to that map that I showed, the entire master plan is kind of central to all of the recreation zones. But the last three things, first of all, on these applications, they're pretty low risk, even if the lift goes in the way that the development agreement is written. In two years, if the master plan isn't, doesn't come to fruition, then it can come out with remediation required on our part. In the maintenance facility, that use exists. It exists in the area, even if we move the building back to where I showed it. And then, lastly, three, it actually gets the public onsite on the private land, just like your hearing requested. And it takes it to a different level and a different experience with the inclusion and infusion of art onsite. Any questions?
Yes.
So, you say this is accessible for free, that this hiking trail, somebody can come, park in, the parking lot there onsite and hike for free?
That is the plan.
Okay, and is there binding verbiage that would put that into perpetuity?
That is, that wasn't provided when we wrote this in January. We can contemplate that, but it is definitely, the, we have an art foundation that supports this, and so, their not-for-profit status probably includes, that might be actually, maybe we only have to do it because it already exists under that, I haven't looked into it. But, you know, back when we submitted, it didn't occur to us to have to, like, go that far in terms of language, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there plans to apply for public monies to build and maintain?
Do you have any available? No, I don't, no, there, it's a serious answer. I, we don't, I hadn't contemplated that. Though, there are funds in the state that, and other projects we've applied for, it wasn't contemplated here. This is a pretty expensive endeavor. I can't say that we wouldn't in the future, but it wasn't something that we had thought of as far as, as funding, and we do have this summer's work funded privately on our own, so.
Anybody else have questions?
I have one more.
Okay.
What's the elevation difference between the top and the bottom, the parking lot and the bottom of the?
That's a good question. I should know that by heart. The top is right in the 9,000 range, and so, you're definitely a couple thousand. Why don't I see if somebody on my team can give me the base?
It just has a lift there. I wondered if it would be feasible to actually hike it back up.
Oh, it is. It's just you, you need to be in the mood and have the energy and.
At 9,000 feet.
Yeah.
Yep.
The breath.
It's gotta be the right person.
I will actually, thank you for pointing that out. If you look at the map on the right-hand side, you can see that there are smaller loops. So, if you wanted to do, and that's how they'll be shared, like, a typical person maybe would experience this loop in an hour, a 30-minute loop, a 45-minute, an hour. And that would, of course, be dependent on where you're coming from and how experienced you are at hiking, but they will, there'll be various experience is.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brooke. All right, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak about this art trail? Katie?
Hi, I'm Katie Lee Coven, and I'm the Executive Director and Chief Curator at the Nora Echols Harrison Museum of Art up at Utah State University. I've been in that role for 11 years. I also chair the Public Art Committee for Utah State University and serve on the Public Art Committee for the city of Logan and other things for the community, as well as some of you will know. I am just wanting to share my support for this ambitious art project component of Powder Mountain. I was able to meet with the curators on the project and some of the leaders last fall, along with Wendy Hassan, who, because she couldn't be here, she said, Katie, are you able to go tonight and speak in support of this? And so, I'm happy to do that. I actually, when they invited all of the arts leaders and curators from around the state up to the mountain last fall, Reed Hastings was there, some of the residents who live in the mountain were there, and their team, and they presented their plans for this public art initiative. And when I say ambitious, I, it truly is unlike any other art park that exists or will, or when they're done with it, and the country, and I think the opportunity for Northern Utah to be, and Utah as a whole, to embrace both the components of cultural tourism and natural landscapes, and that we value both of those things. I think this is just a perfect sort of marrying of that. And I, at that evening, I happened to sit at a table with Reed Hastings and some of those residents and was asking them about, you know, what they were thinking of, why were they interested in doing this? And it really was about, thinking about year-round usage of the mountain. And while their private residents are obviously looking for certain amenities and things, how can they really, you know, sort of expand the ways the public uses it? So, there's over, I think, 20 art installations at various stages, some that exist already. There's a plan for a James Terrell piece in 2027. If you're not in the art world, you may not know who that is, but look him up. Like, this is kind of incredible. There's a piece by Raven Half Moon that's being planned. We'll be showing a piece of Ravens and an exhibition on contemporary Native American artists in our museum in the fall. They've also already been collaborating with some arts organizations, not yet mine. I mentioned to them, maybe with Raven being shown in the museum, to see if they'd want to partner so they could highlight what their plans are with that artist. So, that's it. I just wanted to share, as someone who is very engaged with public art and art community support for the concept of this, and I think the potential of Utah being viewed nationally, you know, at some point, as a, as a space that's really ambitious in our cultural industry. So, thanks.
Thanks, Katie. Is there anyone else who would like to speak publicly?
Hi, I'm Michael Bingham. I'm a professional artist. I'm also the owner of Jump the Moon, and I represent a lot of artists with disability issues. I am all for having more art in our state. Many of you have heard of the Spiral Jetty, Robert Smithson, I believe came from New Jersey to build that in 1970. It is the number one most popular earthworks art piece in the world. We have a great opportunity here to add more art to that. I want to just throw in my encouragement and, and kind of make it known, if you don't know this, Utah has an incredibly talented pool of artists that live within the state. Cache Valley has an unusually high percentage of amazing artists that live here. I would like to encourage that if there's any way that some of the art, or a lot of the art in this art park, utilize the talents that we have right here. There seems to be this perception, I've been an artist 41 years, and there's always this perception that if an artist is coming from some other place, you know, far away, they must be better. We have top-quality art here in the state, and I would encourage that we utilize some of the talents here and make that somehow part of the process. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Anyone else from the public? Blake?
Sorry, I'll keep the conversation.
Okay, please, two minutes.
Yeah, Blake Hoffmeister. Pleased to see that they're improving the resort for the art park. The development agreement I read, it did not commit to public access in writing, so it seems like that could be a takeaway from the meeting today, is to get that protected. And while, while you're at it, I mean, I think that there should be protected access to the existing public lifts, if we're improving a private lift, just to meet the intent of the zoning and preserve recreational access. We're not asking, I'm not, the people I represent are not, we're not asking for any new access. We're just looking to preserve the existing access that we enjoy today. And if that's something that they're pushing back on, it kind of makes you wonder why, right? Like, if that's such a problem to get in writing, it makes you even more nervous that they might have additional privatizations in mind. And, you know, the decisions tonight will impact, I mean, land use decisions like this impact, you know, have long-ranging impacts for generations. You know, Cache County, it's a growing county, there are only two ski resorts, you know, it's possible that there will be additional demand for, for Powder Mountain going forward. I know it's difficult to get to today, but in 200 years, who knows what the world looks like? And I think we just need to make sure that this does not become a fully private resort over time. And that's, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other public members that would like to speak? Yes, please.
Hi, my name's Nadra Hafar, and I live in the south end of the county. I face the backside of Powder Mountain and watch amazing light shows as the snowcat team preps the lifts every night. It's just a fascinating thing to be watching. In particular, I think that this, this art recreation partnership is really an exciting piece to this whole thing. Many of the things I won't overstate and, and reiterate, but the ski industry has a long history in helping and boosting different kinds of recreational art. And I think the experience that the state presents in combining these two, getting people outside with the curiosity, the critical thinking part that the art piece has, and I know that, well, Michael and I are both interested in being part of, part of making that happen. And, and something else was said earlier that if, if we don't come forward and help support, then we can't ever sit back and criticize. I have sculptural and, and landscape experience with art facilities and art parks throughout the country. My daughter is just graduating as an international real estate developer from MIT, and she and I share the same interests. And we're really excited about this, and if this passes, granted, a master plan would be great first. We'd love to help be able to make something like this happen and use Cache County as a resource to build this bridge. So, I'm here in support of the potential of what this can be. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, is there anyone else in the public? Lee, one minute.
I'd agree with the, the art, the trail, if it's open to the public, the, the art, all that's a good thing. When you think about the supporting parts that need to be connected to that, that's going to require people. We're going to need some commercial business, we need, we need places for them to live, recreate, besides just walking on the trail that kind of attached to that. And that, I think, is the important part that we ought to be looking at as we're making land use decisions, so.
Thank you. All right, I would entertain a motion.
So moved, close the public hearing.
Second. Moved in second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have one more public hearing. It's ordinance 2025-16, the Yonk Homestead Rezone.
Yes. Hello again, Angie Zetterquist Development Services. This is a request to rezone approximately 80 acres of 155-acre property that currently has a split zoning. The north part of the property is in the A-10 agricultural zone. The south part, which is about approximately 80 acres, as mentioned, is in the FR-40 zone. So, should the property be rezoned to the A-10, it does have the maximum potential development of 15 buildable lots, but that would be reviewed and assessed under our subdivision application process. The surrounding properties are, to the north and south, a mix of ag and residential. To the east is commercial and agricultural. The commercial is the ASI site, if you're familiar with that, Autonomous Solutions. And then, to the west, it's ag and forest recreation. When we review requests to go from FR-40 to an agricultural zone, we do look at the historical use of the property to determine if it has been used as agricultural versus forest recreation. And in your staff report, you can see some aerials from current day to one taken in 1993. And you can see there's definitely been some ag production on that site. So, access to the site currently is substandard in a couple of different areas, including shoulder and clear zone. But again, required improvements would be reviewed as part of a subdivision process. Notices were sent out, public hearing was held at Planning Commission last month. We did not receive any written comments regarding the proposal, either for or against. And based on that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of the rezone from the FR-40 to the A-10 zone.
Does anyone have any questions for Angie about this property? Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak about this rezone property? Okay.
Close the public hearing.
Second. Moved in second, that we close public hearing, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's the end of our public hearings. We will discuss each of those projects in a minute, but we need to go into Board of Equalization. Diana, do you want to come forward and, it's item seven on our agenda.
I am not Diana Schaefer.
Hi.
But we are going to tag team this one. I did want to just bring to your attention as.
Taylor, one second. We need to move to board.
Move to, move into Board of Equalization.
Second.
Moved in second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, no.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm Taylor Sorenson, I'm the county attorney. Before we jump in, I did want to highlight that we had a little bit of a leadership reshuffle in the county attorney's office. I have a new chief deputy, this is Ronnie Keller. He is, was our chief prosecutor, he's currently now my chief deputy, so going forward, he's going to step in for me if I'm gone, or, and also help me continue to lead the office upstairs, so.
Welcome, Ronnie.
Thank you, Ronnie. Just wanted to introduce him to you. Thank you. Great. So, just to preface this conversation that we're going to have together, you and I, I am pro-life. I believe in the sanctity of life. I strongly believe that every child deserves a chance to live. And that being said, I want to let all of you know that granting a tax exemption is not an endorsement of any particular faith or organization that seeks it. So, with that preface, the Utah Constitution, Article 13, Section 3, says that the following are exempt from property tax, and it lists property owned by a nonprofit entity used exclusively for religious, charitable, or educational purposes. Now, what that means is spelled out under Utah Code, Code Section 5921101. A charitable purpose means it is an entity that provides a gift to the community. Now, what a gift to the community means is, it's the provision of a significant service to others without immediate expectation of material reward, or it's supported to a material degree by donations and gifts, including volunteer service, and that the recipients of these services are not required to pay for their assistance received in whole or in part. And a nonprofit entity is further defined in Utah Code as a entity that qualifies for 501(c)(3) designation under our federal tax code. Now, the issue before you is the granting of a tax exemption, a property tax exemption for Planned Parenthood in Logan. Now, this particular property has been exempted since, I believe, 1996.
Three.
Three, 1993. That's a long time. And it has, as I say, it's been exempted here in the county for 32 years. And it has, as I say, it's been exempted here in the county for 32 years. Now, as you may know, as you may be aware, Planned Parenthood is on its way out there, closing that location here in the near future. But property tax is always backward looking. And so this property tax exemption for this entity, just to give you some context, in our state code, if a entity qualifies for an exemption, they are entitled to that exemption under our constitution. And so Planned Parenthood, regardless of how you feel, as I do, about their mission, they do qualify under our code for this property tax exemption. And Planned Parenthood is a very litigious organization. They have been denied property tax exemption in the past, even in the state of Utah fairly recently.
That was in 2021?
In 2021. And they sued the particular jurisdiction that denied them that property tax exemption. They were successful because they meet the requirements under our code. Now, with that in mind, I would encourage you to, so first, as the county attorney, my first job is to protect the county. It's to protect the county's interests, it's to protect the county from litigation that we're not going to be successful in winning. And in a case like this, where an entity meets the criteria, is extremely litigious, denying this entity would likely lead to an uphill battle if it came to a court proceeding. And it's my duty to try and avoid those kinds of difficulties for the county. So that being said, again, this is not an endorsement of their mission, this is simply an acknowledgement of what our code and our Utah Constitution requires, is a property tax exemption for nonprofit entities that are 501(c)(3). So I would advise you to grant this exemption despite your personal misgivings that you may have.
Do you have anything you'd like to say, add to that?
Sure.
So, yeah, so just to reiterate, they have a constitutional and a statutory basis. If you choose to deny it, we had a split vote last time, then that decision has to be in writing, including that statement of facts and the statutory basis for the decision, of which I did not hear one the last time we met. And as Taylor mentioned, they took it to the Tax Commission when they were denied by a county. They, it was a huge, long, drawn out case, which if we engage in that, and like I say, Planned Parenthood won. So that means they expended a lot of county resources on a losing case. If it escalates to the court system after the Tax Commission, then besides county resource and, you know, time, and of course you pay your employees, then it could also have financial ramifications for the county, which we, you know, want to protect against. And in that case, it was the county had argued that they could and should exert local control on determining the gift to the community. So the finding by the Tax Commission was there is no statutory basis for local interpretation regarding charitable purposes or gifts, that this would violate the constitution and the statute that require the taxes to be uniform and equally assessed, meaning equally assessed as with all of the other exemptions that you granted under these statutes this year. I would also like to inform you, in case you didn't see it in your packet, that their gift to the community in free and reduced cost services was $359,970 in comparison to their personal property only, is what they're asking for, tax of $230.73. It's a substantial difference. So again, our office would recommend granting the exemption.
Does anyone have any questions for Diana or Taylor? Okay, I would--
Actually, I have a question.
Okay.
So the question is, why do we have to vote? If it's just, if they can meet the conditions of the application, why vote? And the answer is, because we're doing a check on Diana's office for determining the validity of the checks, true or false.
Well, I would say that generally, local control is the best, and that's typically what our legislature in the past has favored. But over time, a body of law has developed in our Utah Code that has restricted, you know, over time, the discretion of boards of equalization. And so in this case, that discretion has been taken away from the Board of Equalization at the local level by our state legislature.
So I think that was a true. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, or if you don't want to vote, I'm sure you could abstain.
Okay, I would entertain a motion about the exclusive use exemption for Planned Parenthood.
I'd move to approve the exemption for Planned Parenthood.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and is there any further discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
May.
Okay, the motion passes. Did anyone abstain? I didn't hear. Okay, you got that. Okay, Bryson.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Pass that to Bryson.
Excellent Board of Equalization.
What? Oh, yes.
Motion to leave from Board of Equalization.
Move to Bryson. It's been moved in second that we leave Board of Equalization. Those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, aye. Sorry. Distracted with handing that off, so why vote aye?
Okay, now, we go to initial proposals for consideration. We have number A is consideration and approval of the RAPS board recommendations. And you all have that in your packet, the recommendations from the RAPS Award Committee? And we have Alma Burgess to lead us and guide us.
Alma Burgess, grant writer and manager for Cache County. And one of my responsibilities in the finance office is to provide support to the RAPS and Restaurant Board, as well as the council, and to administer the program once you award all of that. So this year, we had a record number of applications. We had 21 more than we did last year. There was 98 applications. They were given, processed in their office, and then given to the board members to review. The meeting was convened on April 21st, which was about a four hour discussion, you're coming up on that, pretty close here, maybe. They discussed all of the applications and recommended, and left a kind of a pot of money of about just a little over $54,000. I think Executive Zook mentioned in that meeting that he kind of wanted to have a little bit more buffer. And so after that meeting, we took the recommendations and we met, he and I and Dirk met, and he wanted to propose changing the recommendations a little bit, removing, if you will, if they could be funded from another pot of money. The county, as well as the municipalities in the county, receive a population allocation. That population allocation had been accumulated by Cache County. And Executive Zook is proposing that there are three applications be removed, if you will, if they can be funded out of this pot of money, be removed. They're number 15, and your packet reflects these changes. We can go back to the other if you so desire. But number 15 is the Cache County Fairgrounds Indoor Arena Ventilation Fan Upgrade for about $73,000. And number 17, the Cache County's Trail and Active Transportation Program Funding for The third one that suggested, and the suggestion is they be funded from this population allocation that the county has accumulated. And the third one is the Cache Valley Visitors Bureau for new outside courthouse signs. And this was suggested that it be funded from the budget of the Visitors Bureau. And that was for about $35,000. So if those three applications are funded somewhere else, or in another way, and if it's approved by the council, that would leave a total of $338,465. I think that's reflected on your, what's in your packet. There were some letters submitted. I think the council received a letter from the executive director and curator of the Nora Echols Museum today for you to look at. And I believe Julie, the director of the Cache Valley Visitors Bureau, also, I think, wrote a letter to a few of the council members about any of those recommendations from the board.
Yeah, I had a question. So I think in your email, you said that the restaurant tax balance would have about $2.88 left in it, and the--
Correct.
--would have $50. How are those divided and allocated?
They, we have one application process, and they are, they're specific things that they can be used for, eligible things. And so we have to keep those two pots of money separate. But when it comes to the board, it's all into one, and then we kind of balance it and make sure. And so, yes, I did have to point that out, that those were different. But overall, you do have the $338,000.
Okay. I also saw they were scored different--
Correct.
--different scoring.
Yes.
What was the, out of the total possible points?
So the total possible, each board member has five points, and it's how likely are you to score, or how likely are you to recommend this for funding? We do that prior to the meeting, because they review prior to the meeting, they score them prior to the meeting, and then they have those scores in front of them. And then they don't have to have a lot of discussion about, well, we didn't like A, I didn't like A, I didn't like A. They can just see the overall score. So they get scored from five to 40 points on each application.
Alma, can you explain a little more about the population allocation that we had? How long had it been accumulating? What was the total that was there? About what do we get each year?
Okay, so it's based on the population of either the cities or the municipalities, or the unincorporated portion of Cache County. And so that varies each year. There is a percentage, I believe it's 15% of the RAPS is set aside for population allocation, and that is then divided among each of the cities and the county. Over the years, and I'm not sure how many years, Cache County has been accumulating this, but as of December 31st, 2024, the balance was $228,138 for Cache County. This year, for 2025, the population allocation for Cache County is $21,754. So that, that provides a pot of money for the population allocation of $249,892 for Cache County.
And those two projects, the Fairgrounds and the Trail, do they equal more than that, less? It looks like it's about even.
They come out pretty even. It would leave about $1,134.
So the, the population allocations that go to the cities each year, they don't have to apply for that in this allocation? That just automatically goes to them to use for their, whatever projects they decide as a city?
Correct. Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and they just have to use it for a project within their city, and they just submit a letter and just explain what they're going to use that for. The nice thing about the population allocation is it doesn't expire, unlike the other awards. The other awards, they have a little over two years to use them.
So the, by pulling those applications out of here, they were already approved by the RAPS board, but we're going to fund them from that other fund that we had as a county?
The two of them, the number 15 and number 17 proposed that they be funded from that population allocation. And then the, the third one, the, for the signs, for the Visitors Bureau would be out of the Visitors Bureau budget.
Okay, and then, so the $338,000 that's left is our cushion. Any money that's allocated out of that would have to come through the council, would have to be an application through the council?
It would, that $338,000, you can make adjustments to any of the recommended or proposed awards, to either increase or, or whatever you would like to do.
Okay. Does anyone have further questions for Alma?
I'm not sure if this is a question for Alma or just among us, but back in January, we soft approved two $40,000 requests. That's reflected in here, these are the same.
That was from a previous balance.
Yeah, that was, that was from a previous balance, and that's already--
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is, this is a new request, and that's how we should look at it for it. It was a Cash Theater Company and Music Theater West.
Correct. That, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead and finish your thought.
That money, the $80,000 that was requested, there was a pot of money there, so we removed that, and so the award for this year already reflected the 80,000 removed. And so this is additional money.
Okay.
Yes.
Those monies that we've been accruing, you know, just been collecting, if we, basically, the way that we would accept those would not be through accepting the RAPS allocation. They would just come through a budget amendment, right?
Correct.
Okay. So they really wouldn't be part of this. I want to, my next question, I'm glad Wes stood up, is the, where have these been hiding? Why, why a quarter million dollars? Where has it been?
So it's been in the--
A line item anywhere.
Yeah, so it's been in the municipal services fund?
Yes.
Yeah.
There wouldn't be a pot of money there?
Yeah, so as we were doing year end procedures, I saw that amount and said, what is this?
Are there any others? Are there any other pots of money somewhere?
I'm working on that.
Fine.
Yeah.
Serious, this is a, you don't just like pull these out of places that, you know, we as a council, we need to know about these different items and these little pockets so that we can actually take care of it.
Manage them.
Yeah, manage it better.
And it is--
Keep them working, finding them.
It is something that, in the financial statements, it's been in there, in the audited financial statements. So it's been part of it. Why there's no action to use it, I don't know.
So if I understand correctly, it's a line item within the municipal services, like, so it's been accounted for in audits as a line item.
So I identified it as equity or fund balance that's been collecting.
Which, yeah, which may or may not have been as clear to us--
Yes.
--prior to Wes's current structure and the county's--
So does that amount include any, has any interest accrued on the original deposits? Or is that just--
I know, we accrued interest for it.
Okay. That's okay. All right. Does anyone have any other questions for Alma or discussion? Let's discuss this.
Well, just, and pardon, forgive me for not having looked it up myself, but I'll take this point to ask. There is one application that just says, lists a specific town and says, 2025 RAPS application.
What number is it?
What is it? Four.
What number?
Number 78.
Number 78.
Number 78.
So it just says it's a RAPS application where everything--
Paradise Town.
Paradise Town?
Well, I know that, I was not trying to out them.
Oh, sorry.
They just did. So--
Well, the purpose is what you're asking for?
So why does it say RAPS application when everything else gives a detail of what they're asking?
I'll tell you what it is.
Yeah, she'll bring out the book.
I don't know what it is.
I'll tell you right now.
And I don't remember, there was--
I apologize if I didn't get it myself. You can see the book is rather large.
This is like the first two pages, this is a quarter the size of everybody else's.
They're under the bus, are you going to drive it now?
I didn't, I'm sorry.
I tried not to, but I would like to know what Paradise Town's RAPS application is for, because it just says--
This one--
--they applied for something.
They heard, they heard we had 250 sitting in a slush fund.
Let's just throw it in there. It doesn't say on my intro pages. I knew I had it in the portal.
I didn't bring my books.
I know, I can't see on this one because it just says that, it doesn't have--
Oh, yeah, so.
But it was obviously discussed as the RAPS committee.
I'm sure it's a great project.
It was, I'm trying to remember if it was lighting? No, it wasn't lighting.
It's very high.
It was for--
I believe it was for the town park-- I believe it was for the town park. I think it was, like lighting and a bunch of other things.
Lighting, I think, I think they had.
What was the number?
Stall lighting that was going up, and it was to adjust to dark sky lighting?
Seventy-eight. We happen to have a guy from Paradise here.
Fastest.
I don't think they know. Lee's looking at, Lee's looking at us.
Alma took pick, Alma took.
I'm looking.
Give me forty-two, forty-two seconds.
I'm looking.
It's, it was, it was for our park, but I think it's for some of our baseball improvements. The lights we applied for before.
Oh, that last year?
They're actually hanging up.
Okay. I'm trying to remember. That was last year's application, the lighting. This year's for baseball improvements. That makes sense.
Tickleball court lighting.
But they would be asking for more.
Yes, yeah.
Great.
Thank you for clearing it up.
Because the current lighting is flood versus.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I know that there was two of those books.
I'm sure.
Ninety-two applications, a lot to go through.
Ninety-eight, yes.
A lot, a lot of details. And I know the committee, they're very dedicated as they went through those, and they, they, they literally did their best. And in fairness, in looking at it, they do weigh a lot of those applications and how much skin in the game, you know, a lot of the organizations have and what, and there's some organizations that have no, don't want, you know, they don't have no skin in the game, they just want the money, and others that they're coming up with 50%. A lot of the cities, same way, you know, they're really participating. And I, I, I think they, it's quite commendable that when they come through, when they go through that many applications and they openly talk about, I, I'm really quite pleased as to how they got it all allocated, all allocated as such. And if they're going to pull these, these other two applications out, that basically then would take that money, right now, it would actually give us that cushion that we, in the past, we have tried to keep a little bit of cushion for emergencies like we've had this past year.
Mm-hmm.
That would do that.
Yeah, I feel good about that, and I really want to commend the RAPS committee, because there were more books than this.
This is a frac, and the rest was reviewed online.
Yeah, absolutely, I think it's great.
Yeah.
And not being on that committee, I had an ignorant question, I apologize, it blew up, but thank you for clarifying, and, and those of you on the committee for waiting through all of these and giving us a good, reasonable recommendation.
I do have some questions.
Me too.
So, yes, thanks to the RAPS committee, but I have three specific questions. First one is number 12. How does a monument fit what the RAPS is going to do? Just explain that one to me. Does that make sense, a part of the RAPS?
Go ahead if you want.
If I may, that had, Bart is here, and we could direct some questions to Bart. That had some improvements to the Cache County Fairgrounds included in that. And Bart, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, if we can address that directly to Bart, because that was his application.
I think the monument was taken out.
The monument was taken out, yeah, it's the improvements that.
Because the monument's still in there.
On, that's just the name of the application.
Okay, so that's what I was leaning toward, is it for a monument or what?
Thanks for the question. The monument isn't truly a monument, it was a sign. We used to have a sign there on the corner of Forest South and Fifth West that said Cache County Fairgrounds. That sign was made of wood, it's tipped over, deteriorated. That application, part of that was to replace that sign, that's why we called it a monument application. But there were some other improvements to ADA access ramps coming, crossing the street both directions, going both to the north and to the west, with the, the little bumpy things that they put in the sidewalks that you see, the ones that are there don't meet current code, kind of redoing that whole corner area in, in that, on that corner. So, I believe there was $10,000 recommended for the ADA improvements, but nothing for the monuments, for the sign.
And that helps me on that, so thank you.
Yeah.
Next one is number 19. Trail around Hiram Reservoir, is this for public property that's going to be done, or is this involving private property? Because last year, we approved some RAPS money that was supposed to go to Trail around private property, and I don't know that I agree with that, so I want to see the same thing at this point. This is the feasibility study.
To make us eligible to receive further funding from the state, maybe Angie?
But does that feasibility study involve private property?
Angie is, is here to speak to that.
Hi, Angie's at request Development Services. It does not, it's on federal and state land, so it's part of the Hiram State Park, and then the trailhead or parking area is owned by the federal.
So, it's just around the dam?
Yeah, and this feasibility study is just around from a point on the east side, south around to a Hiram City-owned property on the other side.
That helps me.
So, that would be public?
And I had a question, if you don't mind, and Alma may be able to help this. I was not aware that the item 17, I believe, the trails operating would be taken from the RAPS and be funded by the population allocation. And I just want to make sure that it doesn't reflect negatively on RAPS applications moving forward, because it usually asks a historical timeframe, or, you know, just, when did you receive RAPS before for this project? Has this been a consistently funded project? So, I just want to make sure that if it gets moved, that that does not negatively impact them going forward if it appears that there's a funding gap from RAPS.
And technically, that population allocation is a RAPS allocation.
Right, I just, yeah.
So, I think you can still answer that question and say, yes, we receive funding from RAPS.
Yeah, just like I said, we, I wasn't aware of that.
Is it captured in the metrics? Is that what your question is?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, it doesn't show as a gap in future applications.
Yeah, so is it captured in the metrics, that even though it comes from population allocation, it wasn't a denied application?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I have one more question, my third one, number 98, feasibility study for the Recreation Center. Is this a set amount for the study, or is this a number like we dealt with last year?
Oh, it looks like Angie's coming back. Maybe don't sit down.
Yeah. So, it is the set number that will fully fund Phase Two of the REC facility. RAPS tax that was approved last year funded the majority of Phase One. There is about 20, I want to say, around 20,000 left over from that that will be applied to Phase Two, and then this is just funding that gap.
Okay. That was mine, thank you.
Okay. Keegan?
One thing that was brought up in that January approval of the two other theater companies at 40 apiece was, it was on the basis that Utah Festival of Opera was pulling a couple of shows, so they wouldn't be spending as much and generating as much revenue.
Correct.
So, is that reflected in this amount that they're asking for, the 365,000? Is that minus 80?
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I can speak to that too. This is for their 2026 ASK, so this is rolling forward, this is indicative of the following year for their.
And that 80,000 didn't have anything to do directly with them, it was other theater companies who were stepping up in an emergency situation to try and do something to help keep the theater funded through that summer, through this summer.
And show that we had a continuity in productions.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not compensating in one area and then double-dipping again.
Yeah, no, it went to completely different entities.
Yeah. Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
This was a, a big project that Dave and the other members of the RAPS committee we undertook, and it was a lot of robust discussion. But in, since we have presented that, we approve these as a committee, I was able to collect a little bit more information about one of the projects and their funding. And so, I was going to ask.
Which number?
Looking right now, it is, it's really hard, it's the museum, the Echols, if anybody can see the Echols Museum, request.
It's number 92.
Oh, it's all the way, keep going, keep going. Okay, 92. I, if, and I had reached out to Alma to give some clarification, because I couldn't remember exactly why this was recommended to, to deny the request, and I think there was some misinformation about the application. I believe Katie Lee Coven is here, if you would indulge, we could ask her a question just to explain a little bit more about the application request, so that we can just understand that better as a, as a group.
Sure.
Perfect.
So, again, Katie Lee Coven, Executive Director, Nora Echols Harrison Museum of Art, giving you a little historical context about the museum, as well as who we serve and the cost of our services. I think that's a bigger picture thing that's helpful to understand, even though our ASK is very specific and very small. The museum was founded in 1984. We focus on American art from the 20th and 21st century of the American West. Everything we do minus summer camps and toddler program is free and open to all, including the proposal that we submitted for a panel discussion, as well as out-of-area marketing for an exhibition we're planning next spring titled The Lore and Lore of the West. And, and we thought this was a good proposal, because, I should also say, the RAPS committee has recommended funding for us previ, in previous years, and it, there could be a perception, because we're part of Utah State, that we, our funds are taken care of. I can tell you that I raise over half of our annual budget every year. The university mostly provides funding for our salaries, and we raise everything else. We serve over 20,000 individuals who come through the museum, over 8,000 K-12 youth come to our museum. You all, last year, helped with a little bit of our busing costs for that. We make core standards for grade level and do an amazing job, or we take our mobile art truck if they can't get to us. So, this proposal was for, oh, actually, I should back up and say thank you to the RAPS, to Cache County for continuing to support RAPS. You know, I don't think it's a selling point that the funding that, and what you are able to provide is incredible to the quality of life of what we do. So, I just want to, I should have said that first, that was my first bullet. I also want to mention that this previous year, you supported a panel discussion that included former students and teachers that were at the Intermountain Intertribal Indian School located in Brigham City, and that was the largest boarding school in the country at one time, most people don't know that. The panel discussion was incredible, we had over 300 people in attendance, it's very impactful and very much a part of our local community history. And so, we also did some out-of-market, out-of-area marketing for that exhibition. We, for this proposal, for The Lore and Lore of the West, we are, this exhibition is going to be a lot of fun, there truly is an art piece that is a Bigfoot skeleton. And this exhibition, the panel discussion will be about the lore component of the West and how folklore has continued to sort of highlight some of these components of our Western experience, and we think it'll be, have broad appeal, and that's why we thought this was a good ASK, as well as out-of-area marketing for it. We are the only art museum in at least an 80-mile range, and we're one of four or five accredited museums only in the state. So, we, we have a high level of quality that we care about, and we really do view ourselves as the community's art museum. So, thank you for reconsidering an opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Any other questions, though, about?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So, in light of that, I would make an amendment to the proposed allocations for historically matching what we've done in previous years to that line item 92, just at University of $5,000.
The ASK was 7,500, and you're saying 5,000?
It's just historically what they have received.
Yeah.
So, I thought I would just match the historical allocation.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify that. So, our new total would be minus 38,465 minus 5,000?
Yeah.
Is that out of the restaurant or the RAPS?
Um, I would have to look.
The art.
I'll make sure.
Are there any other specific line items that anyone has a question about or proposed before we ask for a motion?
I know why that didn't, why that got zero was, was brought up about it was a panel discussion rather than, you know, an actual exhibit of such. And that was, that was a dialogue that we had, that is why the committee chose to go with zero.
Okay.
Anyway, okay, let's move on.
I just wanted to make sure it was really clear that, so the panel discussion is to be in conjunction with the exhibition, Lore and Lore of the West. So, there will be an exhibition that we do a lot of public programming for with it, and the proposal was just for that specific community event.
Bigfoot skeleton statue, not standard for a panel discussion.
I think it said Old Ephrims going to be included in that. There could be. Talk about lore of Cache County.
Okay, I am willing to entertain a motion.
Is there a second on hers?
Oh, did, if I have a second on Catherine's amendment to add the $5,000 for the museum, the Nora Echols Museum?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and those in favor of that motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we got four to two?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Okay, that motion passes. Can I get a motion on the larger?
I would, I would therefore then go ahead and move to propose, and propose that we go ahead and pass the proposed allocations of 2025's RAPS.
Second. Oh, sorry, second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor of accepting the RAPS application recommendations, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much, Alma, I know you worked really hard on all that and keeping it straight. We appreciate you. Sorry, this has been a long meeting.
Could have, could have.
Okay. You know what, that's a good idea, can we take a five-minute break for anyone who needs to have a little break? We will reconvene at 7:52.
I'll make a motion to recess.
Okay, thanks. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
Good ball of breath.
Do you? Okay. We're waiting for Mark. Just waiting for Mark. Thank you all for your patience, especially those of you that are here to listen to the We're gonna wait for Councilman Hurd to come back before we can get started, but hopefully soon. We have a quorum, that's true. Okay, maybe we won't wait for, we'll just let him join in. Okay, so, initial proposals for consideration. We did the RAPS board. Now, we need to do the agricultural, the Francis Agricultural Protection Area. Angie?
Did you guys move to suspend the rules on the last item?
We, we did not. Oh, we don't have to for the RAPS.
RAPS one.
Okay. Sorry.
Nope, thank you.
It's not a resolution, it's not ordinance.
Just recommendations?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, Resolution 2025-15, the Francis Agricultural Protection Area. Does anyone have questions for Angie? Do we want to discuss that?
Madam Chairwoman, I move that we suspend the rules and pass Resolution 2025-15, Francis Agricultural Protection Area.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that resolution passes. Okay, the Powder Mountain Redevelopment Agreement Ski Lift. Do we want to, does anyone want to have a discussion about that amongst ourselves?
I will say something.
Okay.
I sat on the Planning and Zoning Board for the county for many, many years. Even with all that experience, I am confused with this process of what's going on with Powder Mountain. I understand the legal opinion. I asked Andrew earlier this week to answer the question that Paradise City posed to us. And I understand property rights. But the part that weighs most heavily on me is that some of our citizens aren't fully aware or understanding of what's going on here. And I understand what's been talked about by the state legislature and the law, and, but I also lean on that last part that we received from legal, that is the legislative body, we get to choose which way do we go on this. And so, I have a hard time supporting this because we have so much questions from the public. If we cannot answer and give facts to our public on any of our decisions and consequences as we go forth, I'm troubled by that. Now, I know that Dirk has given access to that, I know Angie has talked about that, but still answering that for all the public that I have seen and that I've talked with gives me some concern. So, I have concerns with that, but I understand the property rights, I understand the private, I understand all of that. But when there's so much question from the county, I think there should be a possibility of answering that and going through a process that we really make the public or help the public see which way is going. And so, I, I'm just voicing my concerns here.
I want to share my concerns as well, kind of along those same lines. Of all the, I think, 100-something comments that we received, probably the, the most predominant was the public versus private access and what they would have access to. And where this lift would be on private property, it doesn't necessarily alleviate the concerns of the public-private. I, I agree with Nolan that there's, you know, people can do, you know, what's within their right on their private property. I also think there are areas of the country where, you know, the person who grew up surfing can no longer do that in the ocean in their backyard, or the person who was used to swinging on the rope swing in the river behind their house can't do it anymore because it's been turned into something else. And where, I can't, I don't, I don't know the exact numbers, but when I last looked at that, the median income for Cache County was around 80,000. I look at this resort being in the top three most expensive in Utah, and I think, like, there are places in the country, like, let's say Vegas, where there's a very expensive hotel, but local residents have access to a discounted rate. Powder Mountain hasn't shown interest in offering that to Cache County residents, and I, I'm interested in skiing, my family's interested in skiing and snowboarding, and I, I look at that. And so, on principle, it's hard for me to acknowledge and accept that this may be unaffordable to the overwhelming majority of residents. And I do think that the master plan shows interest in private and public balance, but I, I don't want to dismiss the concerns that have been brought up, that the master plan hasn't been approved yet. And even though there's intent, it's not formal. So, I'm hesitant to approve this one.
Okay. Anybody else want to give their?
I find it interesting that, you know, when, look, for example, when a store opens up, the public uses that store all the time. They go in there, they buy goods, they're in there, there's public access, public, public, public. But the store then has a right to shut down and not have a store for anybody, it can change it if they own it.
Yes, they're right.
And, and I, I have a little bit of a heartbreak if we go in there and tell private landowners that they, you can't shut it down, we demand public access now. That bothers me.
Like Nolan mentioned, that respect for public rights, I, I, I'm very much that, you know, if they decide to shut the store, they have a right to, I guess, you know, do something else with their stores. If they're selling ticket, you know, lift tickets, it's part of the store. So, I, I don't know, I'd look at it, maybe that's a simple way of looking at it, but as far as, I'm still, even Dirk, you're very eloquent to me in saying a whole lot of nothing, because I didn't still understand as you were kind of going back and forth of, you know, the process. You know, it's.
It kind of bounced.
I felt like a pinball listening to you in a machine, going back and forth, and I, I'm not real comfortable with the, all of that. I, I wish that we had, I wish our development services team had the help, the way where that we could just get, when something came to them, they could get it done faster. And they, they're, we need to back them, and we need to get these processes either done faster, so we aren't always trying to put this, do this, then this, back and forth while something else is occurring. We need to kind of speed up some system there, so I'm still having a hard time with it myself, so.
I, I tend to agree with Dave. I feel like, you know, if, same, the store analogy, if they decide they want to sell things for a million dollars, if they've got customers that'll pay it, then we don't have the right to demand that they sell affordable things. I think that property right is the basis of our nation. And I don't think, I don't think legally we have any right to demand that they have some affordable or discount for, I mean, it would be nice, but I don't think that's within our purview. And I lean pretty heavily on our legal, the legal opinion that's been given to us, that this process is within the scope of the state code. Also, I feel like Powder Mountain, in good faith, gave us a master plan last October, and the reasons that it hasn't been approved yet are multiple and complex, but it's not because of anything they failed to do. It was because of some things that happened within our department and losing people, and I, I'm really grateful that we're being careful, carefully going every single part of it to protect our county, to make sure there's not something that we don't understand. And as I look at the three projects that we're looking at tonight, I was there at Planning Commission when the Planning Commissioners discussed it all pretty thoroughly, and I feel like the ski lift is in an area that is privatized anyway. It's, that's not going to be a question. And it's, it's a timing thing. Like, they turned their master plan in in October with the idea that they could develop some things this summer. That was the intent. And I don't see any of these three projects, the maintenance shop, there's already a maintenance shop there, the, the trail system. I, I would maybe like to see something from Powder Mountain that guarantees that that, that art trail is open to the public. That part, I think we could. But as far as the other three go, I, the other two, I'm in support of passing those. I, I support our Planning Commission recommendations. I feel like we need to get that master plan done as quickly as we can and encourage that to happen, and, but I don't think these, I don't think these projects have enough of a scope that they're gonna affect that. And that's my, that's my opinion.
I echo a lot of your sentiments, Madam Chair, excuse me. I echo a lot of the sentiments that have been expressed this evening, that this has been private land for as long as we can really trace that back, that this hasn't been public land, it is now suddenly getting that taken away from the public, this is private land and has been. And so, we believe in, in private property rights, we believe in that also. If, if there was some guarantee, I, I feel like I've done some due diligence in as much as I've gotten answers from staff, the required answers, and I've met with the, the proposed developer, the developer of their proposal, to get additional answers. If, if, if people say they need additional two weeks, I'd like to hear some guarantee that they're gonna do some similar research. Otherwise, I feel like it's, we're not acting expeditiously, and I feel like that's part of what we should do, not just hold a project hostage, because we're, I'm not gonna read, I'm, I'm not gonna read the develop, I've just got a link for it right now. I'm not gonna read the master plan in the next two weeks. I'm gonna rely on the professionals that we're paying, that are being paid to do that. And again, it's not, it's not gonna get done in the next two weeks. So, I don't see really justified a reason to hold up these projects that, other than the one I did state that I would like, as Sandy mentioned, I would like to see some guarantee that that, that those land, that trail system that is proposed as being used for public use would have some binding verbiage for that. That's a, I don't see any need to really hold up these projects any, any longer.
How is that any different? You're asking that there is a binding thing for public access, but yet we're talking private property?
Because they've told us they want to give it to us for public access. I just don't want them, it to be a, kind of like a.
Deans.
Yeah, and promise that it can be pulled back. If they're selling it to us with that whole premise, I would just like to see that there was some binding verbiage to put that into perpetuity. That's their proposal now, is for it to be for public access.
May I say something?
I'm sorry, the public comment period is over, but thank you.
Well, everyone is to take a turn.
Please.
And in the spirit of public hearing approach that we took, I don't have much to say that's different than what's already been said. So, Madam Chair, may I make a motion?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and approve Resolution 2025-17, the Powder Mountain Development Agreement Ski Lift.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Those who in favor of passing resolution, suspending the rules and passing Resolution 2025-17, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that was four to two. Okay. Okay, now, go to Resolution 2025-18, the Development Agreement for the Maintenance Shop.
I move to suspend the rules and approve Resolution 2025-18.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we suspend the rules and pass Resolution 2025-18. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Did your vote get recorded, Keegan? Were you an aye on that one?
In favor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next one.
But I, I would be fine putting this off two weeks before our next one to get some verbiage from the request that we made to the proponents.
So, just continue that one?
Yeah, if.
Unless someone else wants to make a motion on that?
If someone wants to make a motion, that's what my intent is on that.
Okay, so that one would be continued unless someone wants to make a motion to consider that one? Okay? Ordinance 2025-16, the Yonk Homestead Rezone. Anyone have discussion on that or questions for Angie? To me, that one looked pretty simple. It was, it's part of a full parcel that has been agriculture.
I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 2025-16 on the Yonk Homestead.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Whew. Thank you, Angie. Okay, ordinance 2025-22, Fire Code Amendments for Residential Developments. Who's doing that one? Is it Rod? Thank you for sticking with us. I'm sorry for the marathon.
No problem, no problem.
After this, take the rest of the night off.
He's here for it. He's enjoying it.
So, in Appendix D in the code, the appendixes, first of all, the appendixes aren't adopted in the state of Utah, so we have to adopt, adopt them as, as accounts, make it an ordinance. And so, we're in the process of a lot of subdivisions coming into the county, and when I mean, when I say subdivisions, it used to be three houses per subdivision. Now, it's, we're looking at 20 houses per subdivision, and so.
In unincorporated areas of the county?
The unincorporated county, which, remember, we have zero water supply. We have to bring the water to these, to these areas. And so, we decided that we adopted Appendix D, and then what it says is that the fire department needs two accesses out of the subdivision. In, in the appendix, it says more, more than 30 houses need a second access. But with these subdivisions coming in with 20 houses, we feel that we need that second access, not only for the people that live in the subdivisions, but for the firefighters that have to come up and fight the fires. And so, we're, and we're in the middle of, of one right now. And also, it says that in the part of that appendices, it says if the, the homes are sprinkled, then you can eliminate the second access. And again, remember.
What does that mean?
So, if you have 30 homes, the, there's, there's two exceptions to the rule. It says if the, if the houses are sprinkled, then we don't, you don't have to have a second access. And then the other exception is an access is required, a second access is required for future, for future, you know, use or development. And so, that word "future" is kind of the, the word that's hanging us up, because unless, unless they, I'm sorry, I'm on call tonight. Okay. Unless they, sorry, distraction. So, this, the, they need the sprinklers, but, like I say, when we get in these areas where we have to bring water in the unincorporated, there's just a lot of vegetation around, which, if you guys remember Calif, you know, the Paradise Fire in California, and the recent one there in California, I just, just feel that we need to change that, to say the future, that could be, who knows when? It could be five years, it could be two years, it could be 10 years down the road. Who's doing that one? Is it Rod?
Jason.
Jason. Thank you for sticking with us. I'm sorry for the marathon.
No problem, no problem.
After this, take the best light off.
He's here for it. He's enjoying it.
So in Appendix D in the code, the appendixes, first of all, the appendixes aren't adopted in the state of Utah, so we have to adopt, adopt them as, as accounts and make it an ordinance. And so we're in the process of a lot of subdivisions coming into the county. And when I mean, when I say subdivisions, it used to be three houses per subdivision. Now it's, we're looking at 20 houses per subdivision. And so.
In unincorporated areas of the county?
The unincorporated county, which, remember, we have zero water supply. We have to bring the water to these, to these areas. And so we decided that we adopted Appendix D. And then what it says is that the fire department needs two accesses out of the subdivision. In, in the appendix, it says more, more than 30 houses need a second access. But with these subdivisions coming in with 20 houses, we feel that we need that second access, not only for the people that live in the subdivisions, but for the firefighters that have to come up and fight the fires. And so we're, and we, we're in the middle of, of one right now. And also, it says that in the part of that appendices, it says if the, the homes are sprinkled, then you can eliminate the second access. And again, remember.
What does that mean?
So if you have 30 homes, the, there's, there's two exceptions to the rule. It says if the, if the houses are sprinkled, then we don't, you don't have to have a second access. And then the other exception is an access is required, a second access is required for future, for future, you know, use or development. And so that word future is kind of the, the word that's hanging us up because unless, unless they, I'm sorry, I'm on call tonight. Okay. Unless they, sorry, distraction. So this, the, the, they needed sprinklers, but like I say, when we get in these areas where we have to bring water in the unincorporated, there's just a lot of vegetation around, which, if you guys remember Cal, you know, the Paradise Fire in California and the recent one there in California, I just, just feel that we need to change that to say the future, that could be, who knows when? It could be five years, it could be two years, it could be 10 years down the road before they push that road through for a second access. So we were proposing that we take away all the exceptions except for we require a second access.
At 30 homes or at 20?
At 20, at, in, in any of these subdivisions at this time. So.
This is going to sound dumb and I'm sorry.
You're all right.
It's a sprinkled, the built-in sprinklers.
Yeah, like, like, yeah, like, yeah, built-in sprinklers, sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
So, and if I could just add a little bit of support here, part of the reason to do this is that currently a developer could say, well, under your code, if I build fewer than 30 homes, 29 homes, 28 homes, that's a development and then I can build 28 more all on that same access and they're two separate developments. So I have, at this point, close to 60 homes on one access, which in a fire-prone area, which we are in, we are in a wildfire area, you create an unacceptable level of risk for homes, for personal safety, so where fire and EMS cannot get in because the cars are trying to get out because you don't have sufficient access. Now, this change in our code makes it so that any development or combination of developments of one or two family dwellings where the number of dwelling units exceeds 30 shall be provided with two separate improved fire access roads. So this is for health and human safety, just to ensure that we have adequate access for our fire department to fight fires and also to evacuate if necessary.
But do we want it to say 30 or 20?
30 is the standard in there.
It's the standard right now. Now, again, we're, we're creeping up into these, these subdivisions. And so that's just something that we're going to have to kind of decide, do we go with the 30? Right now, the issue is we have 27, 28 homes in the subdivision and they want to build another 24. So, you know, it's, more than 30.
So by taking away the exception for the sprinklers, you could say, like, there's 24 homes, as long as 30 of them are sprinkled, the other ones wouldn't have to be right. Like, there's a murky kind of a.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah.
So I, I agree with taking away that exception for the sprinklers.
Yeah. I would, I would rather have, I would rather have a second access than sprinklers in the homes, just for the fact, I mean, the fire code is, is designed around cities. It's not designed around unincorporated counties. And so not to have a fire hydrant, you know, in the subdivisions, just like where everybody lives, we have, we have hydrants. It's just, it's, we just need to get people out. That's the, that's, that's the biggest thing, is to get people out of the way.
So I'm trying to just conceptualize, what's the trigger to have the second access? It doesn't matter who the developer is, it's just how many homes are on one access. Whoever develops, it's just a, it doesn't matter. As long as that trigger happens, we have to have a second access.
Correct, in unincorporated county.
In unincorporated.
So as they get approval for those developments, is there then some qualification from you guys that says, yes, we have enough water to put a fire hydrant to service that many homes? Like, is that part of the development agreement or the, do they have to provide that information?
Water? Provide the water?
Or to, to say, there's enough water and water pressure for a hydrant that could serve that many homes?
Yeah. There's not any in that unincorporated county. There's no, there's no hydrants, there's invents and.
Do you guys have to go with big trucks?
Yes, we have to bring it in tenders, 5,000 gallons at a time.
Wow.
And again, and that's one of the things, it's, it's one thing if we can get out the door fast, but it's another one, it's, you know, most of these fire departments are volunteer and so it takes them a minute to get out the door and get that big truck rolling down the road.
But this doesn't address fire hydrants, this is just access.
Yeah, this is just access.
Okay.
Unless you guys want to allow me to, to require hydrants, I'd be awesome.
I think that's.
If we want no growth in unincorporated, let's do that.
How will this affect, for example, maybe some mountain land developments and things like that?
If it's in the, if it's in the urban interface, say the, the Wui, which is above, usually above, you know, the cabins and whatnot, it doesn't really affect those because it's, they're just, we know that, we know that we can't get to them.
So that's a zoning, that's a question of zoning. Okay.
So another clarification, just as Taylor mentioned, we're in a wildfire area. So I throw sprinklers in a house, but yet a fire comes through like Palisades did, all I did was protect the inside for a little while. I guess that helps in getting people out is the only thing, but it doesn't stop the triggering of a wildfire.
Right. And see, and.
I wonder, I mean, if we're stacking, we got so many homes in a subdivision, so we build or stack on, just like you pointed, we've only protected the newest homes, not the homes that have been built and were there first. So I worry about that.
Yes. I mean, when you, when you have hydrants in the, in the cities, I mean, we can hook hydrants, even if we do lose one house, we can protect the ones next to it because we have constant water supply. Problem is, you get out in the county, yes, we're going to lose one house, but now we're using our water to protect the houses next to it. And then when we run out of water, we've got to wait for water. So depending on what's happening, wind, any, you know, it could just bump to the next house and then now we've got a really big problem. We've got two houses on fire, then three houses, then we just have to, you know, get out. And that's why I say the two accesses is something that I just feel at this point in time, without water supply, that's probably the best way to do it, just to keep everybody safe.
Another thing in the county, you put sprinkler systems in, but if fire starts and I lose power, sprinkler system isn't going to do a bit.
I would entertain a motion about this amendment to our code, fire code. If somebody's ready to.
If, if our fire department is in, in hopes of this and good, I mean.
Is it written to where you are comfortable with it now? What was proposed to us?
Yes, we, we met with the attorneys and we've, we've written it where we, where I think it's most beneficial for the citizens.
Then I'll go ahead on Ordinance 2025-22, suspend the rules and say we approve it. I'll make a motion for, for that.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 2025-22. Is there any further discussion?
I just have one question still on that number 30. What's so magic about 30?
That's just what the fire code says.
Is that a state, is that a state code?
We are backed by the International Fire Code on that appendix, okay.
That, that number was developed by the International Fire Code Association.
Then I'm, I'm good.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. H.
Look, Team, make sure this is recorded. This is one of the last and the final.
I know.
No, we're going to make him come to every meeting until he's gone.
All right, I'll be happy to.
Okay, this to establish the Cache County Fire Department Board of Appeals.
Okay, you notice, notice on that one, it's fire department. So the old code said that the appeals board for the fire, fire code is the fire board, which was the district fire board. Since that's been split, we need to have our own appeals board for the fire department for decisions made. State code also requires that that appeals board is conversant in fire code and, and has experience in fire code enforcement. So the way this has been rewritten is to create a new board. We don't have names for that, of course, but it would be a new board with three members that can handle the appeals of the fire code, which we currently have one in waiting, but we told them we don't have the appeals board yet and we're, this is the first step of creating that process.
How soon would you anticipate being able to put that board together? And, and do you, like, will it happen fairly quickly?
I'd like to have names to, ready for appointment next, at the next meeting.
Okay.
Looks like the executive makes that appointment.
And the advising.
With advising consent, yeah. It's a county, county board, county appeals, rather than a fire district issue.
You guys will recommend those names?
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys.
Between they're made, right? Before they're made?
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys want to wait till next time to study this a little more or if you want to go ahead and pass it and then next time we'll hear those appointment recommendations?
I, I actually, as I say, we passed this. So I would move that we suspend the rules, pass Ordinance 2025-23 on this Board of Appeals for the County Fire Department. And, well, I guess I'll comment on.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Well, I think that it's good that we pass it now and then get this in place as soon as possible. There's a lot of, I'm afraid if we don't get it going here, we've got a lot of things coming down the road that we need to have people listening to.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Thanks.
All right. 10A, gravel pit access to update. Matt, thank you.
Thank you. As you noted, Matt Phillips, Public Works Director. I've been asked by the council to just come and give an update on our Smithfield gravel pit and the access that's going through our pit. I've been working, a little background for some of the council members, I know a lot of council members are familiar with it, but the county owns a gravel pit in Smithfield. And there's current access by adjacent developers that go through that access or go through our gravel pit. So we've been doing our due diligence, we've looked at the current agreements, we've looked at the CUPs around there. And what Andrew has on the screen is an outline of our Smithfield gravel pit. If you notice, there's access onto US 8991. And you can see there's an access road that's, that's clearly defined that goes through our parcel to the adjacent parcels owned by Nixon and Nixon. So in 1993, the county signed an agreement with those adjacent property owners to allow that access to go through. That access was for LeGrand Johnson. LeGrand Johnson currently doesn't almost anymore, so in further investigation on that current access, it's been determined that that, that access is no longer applies and is probably null and void. And so it's probably in the best interest of the county to, to enter a new agreement, to indemnify and to hold harmless the people that are using that access. So again, just trying to briefly go through this. I'm happy to answer any questions. We have had a lot of issues with trespassing, vandalism and different things in our pit, so we feel like it's probably in the best interest to close down that access and move forward with an agreement where we can keep that closed and keep our pit more secure. So.
Andrew, can you remove that white box so you can clearly see where the, yeah? And then go down a little bit to show there's no up, I guess, and there's more access. There's different, it, it's not like they will have no options for access.
So.
They own their, they own the land. Plus, isn't there, there's other options for access from the south? Or, I don't know if that's south.
So we've been, we've been instructed to draft a letter and, and an access agreement. I do have a copy of that. I'd be happy to share that with you guys after this. I've been working with the attorney's office to write that. Happy to, again, after the meeting, give councils a member, give the council members a copy of that. We will be turning that through the process, through the normal agreement process through the county for the attorneys to review that once again. And then we're anticipating that that agreement and the letter to the adjacent property owners will be delivered later this week, so.
And that'll give them a 30-day.
Yes. Currently, that agreement has a 30-day window. Once they sign that agreement, and then, and then the indemnification language that has been drafted by the attorneys, that would give them 30 days, so.
Thank you for working on that, Matt. What questions does anyone have for Matt about this project?
That's, that's pretty brief, so again, if there is council members that are not familiar with it, if they have any questions.
Did we say what the gravel pits use for? I'm just curious.
So our gravel pit or the adjacent gravel pits?
Gravel. For once, what?
Just to give you a scope for, it's about 50 or 60 trucks a day going through our property to, or that's what it's.
Yeah.
Well, if, I think the, the biggest issue here is we have had other county properties that we have shut down because of liability. And I think this is another, another one. If we're going to, if, if we're going to, if this is going to be the counties, we just need to make sure that we limit all liability. Because like you say, there is a lot of, you know, trespassing and people going through there.
Thanks for emphasizing that. I think part of the, part of the reason why we're moving in this direction is for liability, safety, all those types of things. There's OSHA regulations that govern pits, those, those types of things, so.
I fully agree with it, so.
Okay. Will you keep us updated?
Brief update, yes, we will.
Chair, can I ask a question?
Please.
Is there anything on the remainder of this that we could put through to next time so that we, we get people here for another meeting?
Yes, the America 250, can we, well, Chief Brady is still here, or did he leave?
He left.
He left? Okay.
We did the introduction earlier.
Let me, let me really briefly, the replacement to the UAC board, I sent that out to the entire council. I received one reply from Councilman Erickson who would like to take that responsibility as if everyone's okay with that.
You're here.
Yeah, I don't think we need to bawl on it.
Yay, Dave!
You win.
Thank you.
I'm happy to do that.
For your willingness to serve.
That's a, that's a good.
Everything else, we will, we will suspend later. So I would take a motion to move to the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have to say all the whole words?
Yes.
Okay, somebody read the words, please.
Discussion of the purchase, exchange, release of real property, including any form of water right or water shares, or to discuss a proposed development agreement, project proposal or financing proposal related to the development of land owned by the state.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor say aye.